Roll call please.
Here.
President.
Here.
Here.
Buckhouser.
Here.
Spears.
Present.
Teeman.
Here.
Thomas S.
Okay, we have the quorum. I know there's at least one amendment to the agenda, but I'll make a motion. I will ask for a motion to revise the dollar amount of consent agenda item one, CC 2011-76, bills for payment from an amount of $544,298.47 to $420,671.47. So move.
Second.
Any questions on that? Roll call please.
Teeman.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Buckhouser.
Aye.
Munds.
Spears.
Aye.
Moschuski.
Aye.
Kalosimo.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Do we have any other amendments to the agenda? So we're ready. We do have one presentation this evening and our presentation on public care this evening. So we will go into public care for building code update.
Good evening. This is the Long Drum Board of the City Building Code Update Committee for 2016. Last year, in July, we went into the process of a nine-month-long endeavor of updating the ones featured, analyzing them, and coming to recommendations of the community. Currently, the city is operating under the 2,000 High Code, or the 2,000 International Codes. They are scanning the country to be updated every year and every three years. The cycle of these codes are updated. So the codes have been updated in 2003, 2006, and now 2009. We are three cycles behind most recent code updates, and we're looking to increase that timeframe of us reviewing these codes that we are constantly seeing what are the new building practices and construction practices in annuals. So with that being said, staff has put together a very comprehensive memo of all of our discussions and recommendations from the Building Code Update Committee. And I want to point out just a few things. The International Fuel and Gas Code, we're looking at the 2009 version, and there's one recommendation the staff is making that is not in sync with the Building Code Update Committee, for some of you know that. The International Plumbing Code, we're moving it up to 2009, as well as the most current version of the State Plumbing Code. There's a matter on that, an issue about the water science connection, water service pipeline, staff, the issues recommended on the app, and if you want a quarter inch from the Building Code Update Committee recommending really relevant on the app, and further as soon as you can be able to enter discussion. We're adopting the Illinois Energy Conservation Code, 2009. This code meant to affect January 3rd, January 2010, is supposed to affect for all communities September 2010. We need to adopt this and start. You're watching the state mandate, so we're looking for no evidence for that code. The 2009 International National Code, the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code, 2009 International Fire Code. We get into the area that we're all probably here to discuss, the 2009 International Residential Code. This code is a minimal code, all codes are minimal codes. We require fire suppression system in residential homes. That's something that the Building Code Update Committee decided to not put into this code. Staff is looking to put it into the code so that we're not yet restrictive, and we're looking at possibly any new home that's built 3,500 square feet or more would be required to do this. We're looking at the 2009 International Building Code and the 2009 International System Building Code. The one code that staff really wants to emphasize is the electrical code. In our discussions, the recommendation was made to approve the 2008 National Electrical Code. That code is our only use of the 2009 series of the I codes. The Building Code Update Committee decided to go for 2005 code. Staff is still recommending the 2008. Jeremy Cannon, who is with the Fire District, our chairperson of the Building Code Update Committee, has a presentation that shows the fire suppression system. And I have to the audience, Dave Blodden from PNF, the committee, with the code.
Good evening, everybody. Before the video begins, as Christie said, we were working on these codes for quite a while. It was my pleasure to chair the committee. I learned a lot from that. One of the biggest topics, obviously, was the residential fire sprinklers. The city came back and said that we would like to have a 3,500 square foot threshold. Obviously, I would like to have the zero threshold, as the code says. Anytime you make the code less stringent, you set yourself off for lawsuits and whatnot. So I would like to present a video. It's real short, and then I'll talk to you real quick, and we'll go from there.
People who die, children who die, are someone's child. Property is one thing to say, but a human life is another.
Orange County Fire Authority had a unique opportunity to show the effectiveness of residential sprinklers at a Tustin Air Station. We took two buildings that were far and nearly the same, which means the combustible material inside the buildings were as close to identical as possible. The only difference between the two was one was equipped with fire sprinklers while the other was not.
This room is furnished to represent a typical bedroom. There are pictures on the wall, drapes covering the windows, a bed with pillows and blankets, as well as other items. The fire is started in a trash can. As the fire grows, it starts to make a run up the drapes. It takes just 60 seconds to activate the smoke alarm down the hall. As the temperature rises and the toxic smoke becomes dense, your chance of survival decreases by the second. The temperature in the room has risen so fast that your next breath would seal the lining of your lungs if the toxic smoke hasn't already taken your life. Listen closely. You can hear the hallway smoke alarm melting as the fire, radiant heat, and smoke spread throughout the rest of the structure. This time, smoke and flames attract neighbors' attention.
Fire emergency? I'm walking by residence at 6830 Super Stallion, and there's fire and smoke actually coming out of an upstairs window.
Once the 911 call has been received, it will take approximately six minutes until the first unit arrives on scene.
Look, we need 222 copy, request for a second line, six flex blow-in valve to the tank.
It is now thirteen and a half minutes into the burn, and the entire room is engulfed in flames. As firefighters enter the structure, they must first extinguish fire that has spread throughout the building, and then make their way towards the point of origin. In this room, the smoke alarm was placed in the bedroom and activates 10 seconds after ignition. In the previous burn, the smoke alarm was located in the hallway and took approximately a minute to activate. We see the same fire behavior displayed as before, as it rises from the trash can and continues to grow and become hotter. As it grows and consumes the combustibles on the wall, the fire begins to roll across the ceiling. The sprinkler then activates, cooling down the room, and within minutes puts out the fire. Keep in mind, in the previous burn, the fire department didn't even arrive until six minutes after the 911 call.
Common sense would tell you that sprinklers are a good thing, but I had no idea of how dramatic sprinklers can be in actually putting out fires without the presence of firefighters.
On the non-sprinkler side, there was total devastation. The only thing that remained was the frame, bed, and wire hangers in the closet where the clothes went hung. The fire gutted the entire room. When you looked at the damage throughout the rest of the structure, what I thought was interesting was there was still a substantial amount of damage, but there was no what we call fire loading in the rest of the building, which would mean furniture and other combustibles. So it completely destroyed that entire room. For fire prevention, what really surprises was the temperature. And not the temperature at the ceiling, which we expected to rise quickly, but how quickly the temperature rose at the lower levels. Within two minutes, it was over 200 degrees, which made it a terrible space. On the sprinkler side, it was a completely different story. As the fire moved up the walls and started laughing at the ceiling, sprinkler activated and extinguished the fire within a very short period of time. You had a little bit of scorching on the wall, some damage to the container where the origin of the fire was in the trash can, and a little bit of water, and that was pretty much it. There's no question that fire sprinklers save lives. There's no question that they work. The reason why you don't hear about it is that it is a non-news event in that nobody dies, seldom is there an injury, and there's very little property damage. We'll respond units. By the time we get there, we cancel the rest of units in a small mop-up operation, and that's all that's done.
I understand that developers, people who build homes and apartments and commercial buildings, add a lot of heartburn over sprinklers because they do add cost, they add expense to construction. But I would suggest to you that any developer, any builder who actually sees a demonstration, a real live demonstration of what sprinklers do, will change their mind rather quickly. What really convinced me was how quickly the sprinklers attacked the fire, how quickly the temperatures dropped, and it would have given, I think, any occupant a reasonable opportunity to get out. This is one of those man-ones that it's just kind of a no-brainer, it seems to me. Yeah, you're going to pay another, you know, $1,500, $2,000, $2,500 in the price of your home for sprinklers, but look what you get for it. I mean, people are paying far more than that kind of money for some ridiculous cosmetic improvements in their homes, and they pay it willingly.
People see fire sprinklers portrayed differently in Hollywood through movies. For example, you know, you might see the prankster that takes a match and lights off a sprinkler head, and then the whole building, all the sprinklers start spraying water, and that just doesn't happen. It's just the one sprinkler head over the fire, and as the fire grows, there may be a few other sprinkler heads that activate, but you don't have the deluge throughout the entire structure like they portray in the movies.
Residential fires are not only dangerous to civilians, but to firefighters as well.
When you see what it is that firefighters have to do and the risk they have to place themselves to fight a fire that otherwise would have been out before they even arrived. I mean, you know, it's just, it's frightening. It's so dangerous. And this eliminates the danger. Eliminates it.
The advantage to having a residential sprinkler system installed is that's basically like having a full-time firefighter 24/7 on duty right there in every single room of your house, ready to activate at any given moment, and they will have that fire extinguished before the fire department even arrives.
I think if city councils had an opportunity to see the demonstration that I saw, and if OCFA could present information on the actual cost, that I believe that the majority of councils would be convinced that their residents would be protected by residential fire sprinklers at a minimal cost.
A month after this demonstration, Orange County experienced two similar residential fires, both starting in the kitchen. During the first fire, a young female teenager was taking an afternoon nap while the fire advanced through the house and took her life. Two weeks later, a six-month-old baby girl was left unattended in a high chair when a fire ignited. As the fire grew, fire sprinklers activated, sparing the child's life.
Here we live in one of the most technologically advanced nations in the world, and yet we're allowing people to die in residence because of no sprinklers. I mean, every fire that I've gone to where there's been a fatality, had there been fire sprinklers there, not only would the damage been minimized, but a person would be alive to tell about that.
Any developer, any builder who actually sees a demonstration, a real live demonstration of what sprinklers do, will change their mind rather quickly. You cannot put a price on life. Appreciate that. So our fire chief, fire had a house recently built, and he put a fire sprinkler system in. It was a little more expensive than $1,500. It was $6,500, but he did that because he believes in fire sprinklers. He believes that it's good for our community. So just real quick, I wrote something down here. I'm not a good speech guy, so I apologize. Residential sprinklers not only provide additional protection on top of the required smoke detectors for those living in the home, but they also protect those firefighters who will be called to that home. Recently, we've seen or heard news, reports about people dying in single-family homes where they were trapped and unable to save their lives and save themselves. These fatalities usually occur when a phenomenon known as flashover. Flashovers are times during a fire when anything that can burn ignites. Residential sprinklers control a fire when it's in second stage and prevent flashover. Residential fire sprinklers can provide additional protection for young children less than five years of age and adults over 65, statistically at a higher risk, and may be unable to escape a house fire on the road or even with some smoke detectors. If city-wise isn't enough, residential sprinklers also reduce fire and smoke damage to the structure and personal property. As a result, families are allowed to return to their homes, usually the same day at night. With our public forum, we have an insurance gentleman here. Insurance companies are saying that they are four or five sprinklers. Obviously, they'd much rather replace your carpets and furniture than the structure itself. In addition, we also had a side-by-side demo, similar to that one in October at Hoover Forest Preserve. We had that fire in 27 seconds. Quick mop-up, big problem, could have been in that home last in the day. The other side of the building, we simulated a fire response. Six minutes, destruction was gone. Nobody's going to survive that fire. That's my presentation. I appreciate your time, so thank you. Do we have any other comments on the building code update?
Yes, my name's Bill McQ with McQ Builders. Just a couple of comments on the video there, which I agree, I mean, there's no price you can put on a life, but, you know, just a couple misleading things. It's amazing how they can tweak. You know, the smoke detector was not in the bedroom, which is code, so why they put a presentation together that doesn't have a smoke detector in the bedroom? I think it said it took 30 seconds for the one, the "ha" to go off. You know, just, you know, you got guys that's trying to show why they want to do something and make something so misleading, just, to me, doesn't make sense. Gets me going just watching it. But, you know, they talk about cost, $1,500, the $2,500, and I'll talk a little bit about it, but it's much more than that. It's in the $10,000s, some houses will be $20,000. And I'm not making any of this up. I'm a builder. We built the house. There's other things that go along with it. The insurance companies, yes, they're in favor for it as long as you have the fire alarm system to go along with it. So if you're on vacation or not in that house, if a head accident accidentally goes off, they're going to notify the fire department, so they're there. If it's not a fire, they're going to put this out, where if you don't have a fire alarm system, that water's going to run until someone gets there. And I would think that your homeowners insurance is going to charge you a lot more if you don't pay for this fire alarm system, which is another $1,500 on top of the sprinkler system that I didn't even have in the price. But again, I've been building here in Yorkville for 20 years. I've built over 600 homes. 300 of them have been in the Yorkville School District. And just to kind of show you which, I mean, you guys know where the buildings went in the last few years, between 2003 to 2005, I built 165 homes in the Yorkville School District. From '09 till now, I built 11. It's 154 homes less with the economy changing. Land values have dropped 70% to 80% from 2005. I mean, a $100,000 lot is now at $20,000 to $30,000. It isn't lower. I mean, we are making 50% less ballparking on what we used to make when we built homes in '05. The subcontractors, they came to buy material. I'm using the same guys that I started with 20 years ago for, for the most part, and I have to buy repairs. These guys can't get loans because of how slow the market is. And, you know, with all this happening, you know, now we're talking about adding $10,000 to $15,000 to the cost of a house. And, you know, I agree, a life, there's no price, but accidents are going to happen no matter what we do. But, I mean, the people, Yorkville, the city, they voted for the bike trail. I mean, they didn't want to pay $10,000 to $25,000 a year for the bike path, and we're trying to stick somebody with $10,000 to $15,000. You know, it just doesn't make sense. If we had this, there's not many builders here tonight, and if this meeting was in 2005, there'd be 30 to 50 builders here. There's no luck. Those are guys, there's very few builders left. And we're just, you know, going to make things worse if this happens. In my 20 years, other than building the house for the fire chief just recently, I haven't had one person who's wanted to put a sprinkler system in their house. Not one. I sit down, I sign every contract, I've built 600 homes, I've probably met 5,000 people. Not one person has ever wanted to put a sprinkler system in their home. You know, we're a custom builder. I mean, they want a three-car garage, two-car garage, they want a basement, they want a two-story, they want a brick front. I mean, we'll do anything they want. Not one person has wanted a sprinkler system. You know, this has kind of been brewing for a couple of years, and I've talked to a lot of people here in Yorkville, you know, over the last couple of years and everywhere, and even the people we build for. Not one of them would put a sprinkler system. I mean, you can put a survey record, nobody wants one in their home. I had a brother that was a fireman, I have a cousin, my best friend. You ask, I guess, so many firemen, what they think about it, and it's the same reaction from all of them. They roll their eyes, and they're like, it's overkill. Smoke detectors save lives. My brother, about seven years ago, when Yorkville looked at, when they moved to make it mandatory to put them in duplexes, I was looking at doing prairie gardens, and so I put some time into sprinkler systems, and it was the same thing back then. I was told it was going to cost $1,000. It was starting at $4,500 and got to $5,000 for these townhomes. But everything my brother gave me in these books is sprinkler systems are designed to save the buildings, and smoke detectors are what save lives. And I can get some emails, I've got over one in the last couple of days from different builders. I belong to the Northern Home Builders Association. And statistics on newer homes, there's few less fires in newer homes, but problem on homes that are 30 years old. And that's what a lot of these things talk about. But cost, as I talked about, the chief's house was 2,100 square, 2141 was the square footage, a small three-bedroom ranch. $6,500 is what it cost. We did use a little bit more expensive haggar, it was a flush mount on the wall, so it doesn't stick out, which I would think you would have to use in new homes, so kids don't throw balls and hit them. But along with that, in Yorkville, the water line is a one-inch water line, and that doesn't bring enough water to the house from the sprinkler system, so we're looking at bringing another inch and a half, which is going to add big cost. If we have to connect to the water mains, which are on the opposite side of the street, you could be looking at $6,000 just to bore underneath the street and bring it back. But with getting a fire alarm system, which isn't code, but I think if you get, and Jeremy will tell you, if you get a sprinkler system, you should have a fire alarm system hooked up, which is going to detect if the heads go off. That's $1,200. And then you're looking at yearly fees, a fire alarm system, it's $35 a month. Someone's going to have to come out once a year for $85 and check the system. To have a sprinkler system flush is $150. That's going to have to be done every year. So there's a lot of upkeep. But, you know, my guess is, and I haven't gotten a price on a 3,200 square foot home, but you're going to be looking at $12,000. And that's not if you don't have to connect to the water main, which could be anywhere from $4,000 to $6,000. So I think they're misleading on the cost. You know, it's just another cost that the homeowners are going to have to finance. You know, if it's $10,000 to $15,000, and you can almost double that cost for a 30-year mortgage. You know, as I said, we can't get homes to appraise now. With all the costs, with land dropping, with us making less, we can't get houses to appraise right now. And so how are we going to add this? I don't even know if I would be able to get a loan. The banks only lend us so much money to build a house, and if we got to put another $10,000 to $15,000 in it, it's more money that we're going to have to come up with upfront. I mean, I just think it'll shut down new construction. I use probably more than any builder, well, me being here in Yorkville, I live in Bristol now, but I buy my lumber, my windows, my trim, my doorknobs. I use local banks, local title companies. My concrete guy lives here in Yorkville, my framer, my surveyor, my shelving guy, my drywall. I mean, just about anything I get is here in Yorkville, and you're just going to put the hook to them that much more. And thank you for your time. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Fred Dussel, Rover's judge subdivision. Regarding the fire code with the sprinkler systems, it's a waste of money. I'm a 30-year career firefighter, retired from the Royal Fire Department, town chief The fire department should be trained to do interior attacks on a fire. We had a fire in our subdivision just two weeks ago. Attic fire. Should have been addressed properly. The sprinkler system situation that was addressed here on the videotape, I would never address that because it was in the attic. There was no fire load up there, so it would have been a waste of money in that situation. Bottom line is, teach the fire department training for interior attacks. That's what they're getting paid for. It's not essential to have a sprinkler It's not essential to have a sprinkler system built in a house. Fire alarms, smoke alarms are the best thing that we have in the fire service. And that's why it should stay that way. So, hope I can help. There's all the building code up there. Your honor, I've had many jobs. I've been working full-time since I was 16 years old. Before becoming a marketing assistant, that last job that I did was being industrial maintenance. And I took several classes over at Robancy Community College, also took a class on the National Electrical Code, studied all the other codes that were part of our curricula. Your honor, every time government steps in for the greater good, for the common good, for the safety of the people, there's always, there's no price that you can put on this, on the sprinkler system. That's fine. Let the manufacturer pay for it if it's, if they value life so much. I say this for a reason. When I took my class on the National Electrical Code, there were people there who had submitted suggestions for this electrical code. One of them, this person wasn't there, but they told us the story of a new wall outlet. You put it near your curtains where the windows are. So if it rains, the water comes in, same thing. They show the very same thing. The water comes in, shorts out, flash, your curtains are on fire. We've got to have that outlet in there. We've got to make it code. For the greater good of the people. The person that put that part of that code in there was the manufacturer of the outlet itself. Now, I have to question, is it a question of safety or is it a question of profit? The other thing that the builder says, and while I have all respect for the fire department for wanting to do things safely, we're invading on his privacy. We're invading on his liberty to build. I think Ronald Reagan said it best when he quoted Mao Zedong. Every year, we create more criminals and tax cheats by the government's creation of new codes and laws and regulations. Your honor, if it's a question of public safety and everything, and if this is something that's really good for our community and everything, let it be voluntarily. You know, educate the public, make an offer out there to them, educate them on what it's all about, make offers to them, what the costs are. But I don't think this is government's place to be stepping in. Your honor, you have the floor. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jesse. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Mike Skinner. I was on the committee for the Building Code Committee. I was part of the group that voted against having sprinklers put in. I'm also a builder here in Yorkville. I'm also on the Resolving Board of Appeals here in Yorkville. I too have been here for almost 30 years. So I have a vested interest. I'm in the unique spot where I live in a sprinkled home that I built. I live in a duplex. I was required to put sprinklers in. Unlike the video there, it wasn't $1,500 or $2,000. Mine was $9,000 per side, $18,000 per building, for 1,650 square feet. It wasn't a little more because I did put better heads in. My basement was sprinkled so that when I finished it, the bedrooms were sprinkled as per code, as they should be. It was designed that way. If I were to build that same home right now, I couldn't. I couldn't build that same design, the same vaulted ceilings. I couldn't do it because the codes have changed. First of all, as Billy said, I would have the water service coming in to my house. I would have to boil under a wall stripe, a sewer tap, a water tap for both units. At about, on a duplex now, you're looking at about $6,000 for the length. Billy's a little bit shy, about $6,000. Then, because I have vaulted ceilings, the new codes will not allow me to put sprinklers in or get vaulted ceilings in. You can't put them up there unless I go under a fire trial system. You need to be educated a little bit on different types of sprinkler systems. You have a wet system, which is, the system's always wet, there's always water in it. Fire goes off, the sprinkler head goes off. You knock the hell off, the kids are playing baseball in the basement, water goes off. You have another one that has a glycol in it, which is, allows you to put the sprinkler head up here on the ceiling and it won't freeze. More money to put it in, requires more maintenance, must be flushed yearly. The other way is called a dry system. Air lines, sprinkler head goes off, whatever reason, fire, kid knocks it off. There's no water line. You have an air compressor in your basement, that pumps the water up there. Very expensive system. Right now, if you want to put this kind of ceiling, you can't unless you go with a very expensive sprinkler system, either a dry system or a glycol system. It has to be maintained every year. I'll get to that, I'm going to maintain. The other thing is, as far as insurance companies go, I got a $175 a year brick on my homeowners policy, yes, for half, own both sides. But for one of the water protection services, it was another $165, excuse me, $165 a year. So I say $10 a year for a $9,000 investment, not a very good return. Well, let's talk about building a little bit. Homes are built, I haven't built one in 30 years. About 600 I wish. Building those good homes. We all build good homes because we're forced to buy the building codes that we currently have. We have draft stop. We have smoke detectors in every room, in every hallway, to let people know there's a fire. And as far as draft stop goes, those that don't know, between every level in the home, between basement first floor, first floor, second floor, if you have a second floor, or first floor, and up here, everyone penetrates you in that wall, and that floor has to be fire blocked. So no air can get down there, up the wall, in the ceiling. No air, a fire can't spread. If you have a sapphire going along up here, it has to be blocked off from the wall. Homes are written down forcibly without sprinklers. Our homes are very safe. New homes work because of the chemistry, we will never be able to outlast smoke detectors and build tiny greenhouses with tiny free furniture. We have to educate the people. But I tell you, the next person that wants to move in Yorkville, he has to spend the minimum of $12,000 to put a sprinkler in. And I would ask each and every one of you in this room to put a sprinkler system in your own home. Spend the money, put it in, okay? Show them you really like it. I don't think you will. So, we've built good homes now, for six. And I think we can take a step back. There may be a time when sprinklers would be required throughout all of United States just like seat belts are. Right now, it's making the choice of the person that wants. If I built a duplex, would I put one in? No, I couldn't afford it now, not in this economy. Will I sell my duplex, will I get that $9,000 back? No way, absolutely not. So if we want to cripple the people that want to live in Yorkville, burden them with something that may save lives, it will save lives. It will save lives. But it's that choice. They want to do it, they can put it in. But in the meantime, let's let them make the choice, not this group of people that are saying, "You have to do it." Best on sprinklers. I want to talk a little bit about electrical outlets. Can we do that now? What everybody in the staff wants us to have is art fall breakers. Art fall breakers are, if you pull your plug under the wall, right there, without turning off your vacuum, your lamp, your electric drill, it pops you right down the basement. Now, I know we've been told that they may have fixed them, but my last conversation with Paul Seale, who was having a go at the zoning, said, "No, not. They still have the problem." You unplug, you vacuum your house, and you plug one plug in the wall, it creates an arc and it trips the breaker down in your basement, between your garage and your shop back. If you're using your drill, amateur drill, will trip the art fall breakers. And that's one of the codes we had talked about a long time ago. Staff wants it, art committee said, "No, no, it's a good idea." First of all, it won't work right yet, so we got it. Secondly, give it some time. I'm sure the linger was saying it takes some time. But if it works, it bugs out, we can redo it again. Let's not jump on the bandwagon and say, "Oh, because some whole committee propaganda like this for our sprinklers says you got to do it." Square D, who has lobbyists, saying we should spend hundreds and hundreds of dollars more on a house besides the sprinklers, who is probably is a good idea. So we want some, go ahead. Right now, they're going to require the methods, but they want every outlet in the house, throughout the whole house. And it's okay. So. Wow? Thank you, Mr. Skinner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Jake Dobbs. I'm manager of land acquisition and development for Polty Group. We are currently building in two subdivisions, Yorkville, Autumn Creek, and Bristol Bay. The previous builders spoke far more eloquently to the whole process, so I'll get down to the brass tacks. Our purchasing department told me that adding sprinkler systems to our existing product in Autumn Creek would add at minimum $8,000 per house. We gain and lose buyers on $100 increments. Right now, we're less than two sales a month in Autumn Creek, less than one a month in Bristol Bay. Adding $7,000 plus $8,000 a house could devastate our sales. You may not see another sale if you're one of those communities. That's how fine aligned we are in terms of our profit margins and sales. In some instances, we're losing money. So while I appreciate the spirit in which the ordinance is intended, the bottom line is, our buyers in these communities cannot afford an additional $8,000 to a house, and we will lose sales, and the city will lose permit dollars. It's that simple. Thank you.
Okay. After the young lady.
I'm Lynn Dubachek with Yorkville Economic Development Corporation. As many of you know, I recently attended the International Shopping Summer Show in Las Vegas. I had meetings with retailers, many meetings with retailers while I was there. And the message that I received from them was that retailers have certainly slowed down. And we know how important commercial is to our community. And the retailers are interested in working with communities that have set the stage for encouraging residential development. They certainly understand that residential development has slowed down. They also know that new home sales are competing with foreclosures and short sales that are out there in the community. So they would like to see if you are one of the finalists for a store, and we are actually being looked at by a couple of retailers. They want to see our community as being one that is encouraging residential development, new rooftops, because we know that that drives commercial. And adopting this portion of the code would certainly be kind of productive to sending that message to the retailers out there that are looking at us. I also wanted to let you know that I received a phone call today from Tim Greier, who has built seven homes in Yorkville last year and is tasked to build six homes in Yorkville this year. He's in Colorado right now on a trip with his family, but he wanted to let you know that he felt that with certainty, none of these 13 homes, the seven from last year or the six from this year, would have been built if this policy was in place. And he is a custom home builder as well. Also, I was a member of the Building Code Committee, and I also spoke with Adam Duns from Gladstone Builders, who is also a member. And he also is unable, not able to be here tonight, but he also wanted to let all of you know, as I do, that we feel very strongly that we worked hard, our community worked hard, and we hope that we take all of our recommendations to heart, and we fall with this, with not adopting this portion of the code. Thank you.
Hi, my name's John Lilly. I'm from Crestwood Builders. I'm a developer in Kendall County. I've done five subdivisions in the area. I'm also a builder. I've built over 1,700 homes in the last 30 years. Like Bill said, you cannot put a price on life, but the smoke alarms do work. We've, in 1,700 homes, we've not had one injury, one death related to fire. In building out here, we took over a subdivision here recently. I was a little reluctant to do that, but there's a lot of good people out here and from the area, so we went ahead and did it. Unfortunately, in Yorkville, the permits alone are so high, and I know you don't want to hear this, but Naperville's for, same house is $8,000, where I'm paying $20,000. So I'm $12,000 down there to begin with. I'm not selling anything out here, I am in Naperville. We have a subdivision, a new model here, and the permits have to be looked at, another issue, another day, whatever, but now you're adding another minimum $12,000. These figures, the builders have given are correct. So now you're $25,000 to build in Yorkville. We haven't got one permit out of Blackberry Subdivision. We're too high, we're too high on permits, and if you throw this on top of it, that'll close down also. I am building, I still have a lot. There's homes going up. We're building in Naperville, Plainfield, Kendall County, having sold one in Yorkville. You're too high in the permits, you don't want to hear it, but that's what's going to get rooftops in here. And if you throw this on top of it. We were also grandfathered in Blackberry, where I saw this coming, and we had in writing that, you know, we would not be getting the smoke alarms in there. So talk about a lawsuit waiting to happen, not threatening, but you guys did give us that deal. How can you do that for us and not everybody else? It's going to be a mess. But bottom line is, you want people to come in here, in the community. Everybody, other towns are working at it, they're lowering their permits. I've yet to see Yorkville do anything about this, and it's a shame. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Angelo Claronomus. I'm president of Property Concepts. We have offices in Oswego. Over the last 37 years, we've built in excess of 4,000 dwelling units. Unlike Bill, I did have a few requests about sprinkler systems. And when we priced them out as an option, no one took the option. The film we saw is very compelling. You have 5,000 homes in Yorkville?
Right now.
Some of those homes were built 50, 70 years ago. Certainly now with the materials that are available today, with the direct wire, smoke detector systems that are available today, those homes may be more in need of a sprinkler system than new homes we're building today. Would you require that to all the existing homeowners in your community in those 5,000 homes? I don't think so. I, you know, as I said, the film is very compelling, but in this market, in this time, I think it'd be a hard sell. I think you'd see permits just drop off to nothing in Yorkville. You have communities around you that are not adopting this type of an ordinance, and that's not to say that life safety is an important issue, but they also recognize the fact that they have to keep their communities moving forward. I think the codes that you have in place need to be enforced, not just in new home construction, but in existing homes. And that's a whole other area. To close, in the 4,000 To close, in the 4,000 dwelling units that we built over 37 years, we never had a fire that took a life. Most of those homes complied with local building codes and fire codes and had smoke detectors and alarm systems in them. I think, you know, you've got a good plan, but I think this is just, it's reaching. It's going to price homes out of the market. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gary Nyer. I work for Marker Inc. We've developed two subdivisions in Yorkville of approximately a total of 500 lots. We sell to local builders. I think it's important as a governing body that you look at the big picture here. Mr. Worley spoke well about all the costs involved in not only building a home, but developing a project as well. Please don't focus on just the issue of fire sprinklers. When you're updating your codes, you've got the cost of the electrical upgrades that are required. You're going to now enforce the 2009 energy code. Keep in mind the additional cost that that's going to bring to building a single-family home. And to all those costs, please keep in mind the fee increases that have taken place, say, in the last five or six years. All told, the price of a new home in Yorkville needs to be competitive with the surrounding communities. I'm not here to tell you that sprinklers systems are a bad thing. But if they're a good thing, why do we have to be on the cutting edge of requiring those systems when the communities around us are not? You will have, if you adopt these codes, we pay them, you will have the best, most recent codes in absolutely no homes to be built underneath them because no one can afford them to be built. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Jeff Lincoln. I've lived in Yorkville for 18 years. I'm just talking from a banking perspective. I'm somebody I mentioned about the appraisal issues. I'm in the mortgage business, and I've been doing this for 22 years. We have appraisal issues as it is, getting values in. You probably were. Values have been dropping. Somebody's going to be paying for sprinkler systems. It would have to be pretty much cut through the other pocket because they wouldn't qualify in their mortgage if they came from a mortgage. We have a lot of people right now that are having a hard time building a construction in existence and just getting values to be where they are. If they're spending $15,000 or even $10,000, they're not going to see the value in the appraisal. So from an underwriting standpoint, it's just not going to happen. And we're having a hard enough time getting new starts in Yorkville as it is. And people are normally, right now, from what I'm seeing anyways, are going FHA with 2.5% down, 3.5% down. So I don't know who's going to be able to afford these sprinkler systems. So. So that's all I have to say on that, from a banking perspective. Appraisals are huge issues right now. We're having a hard time getting values to come in just to keep people in their homes. And it's hard enough, as you know, with all the foreclosures that are going up.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Jeremy, do you want to add something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to address. The law in the code requires you to upgrade your water service. So the existing water service is fine. It's a design issue. The chief's house, we had to upgrade because of the types of sprinkler heads he used. They were on the market for less than a month. So now, they've been on the market for a little longer. They've been able to design it differently. So upgrading the water service is not an issue. As far as dry systems in a house, it's not in the code, and it doesn't make any sense. So it should be a non-issue. Glycol's no longer allowed in residential fire sprinklers, so that shouldn't be an issue either. As far as maintenance, the code itself does not require annual testing of your fire, residential fire sprinklers. The plumbing code asks that you test your backflow preventer. And what Bristol Bay is doing is they're putting that in their HOA. So the whole community is paying for that, for the backflow preventer price. Now, P 2904, which is the residential fire code and the IRC, is a minimum code. So anytime you lessen that code, like I said earlier, you're setting yourself up for a lawsuit. Anytime you have a loss, and maybe the city turn, you can help. You know, if you had a loss, no? Okay. So you can make the code less stringent, and there's no legal...
Okay.
Okay, well, I guess I would disagree with that, but you're the attorney and I'm not, so. You know, the thing is, is, you know, if we build a house less than the national minimum and we have a fire death, and we have a significant loss, who are they going to look for? I mean, who are they going to look for? The city council that made that code less stringent? So look for your experiences. I know some of you have seen demonstrations. I know some of you have homes that have fire sprinklers. We even had an old man that started a fire force for a demonstration. So, you know, I would just beg that you don't make the code less stringent. And I thank all of you this year. I mean, they have so much experience, so much dedication to this community, and so do I. And this fight, or I shouldn't say fight, this debate hasn't started here and won't end here. It's already been 2012 codes. And those codes are developed by building officials and firefighters and contractors and all people from all walks of life that are developing these codes. So I just hope you look at that. And, you know, if there's anything that you need from me that can educate you more, educate anybody in this room, I have an open door. So please, I'm here to serve. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The city council is going to have a chance to discuss this when it comes back to us. But, are there someone else?
I'm John Michael, of McQ Builders. Not to argue with Jeremy, but the way you look at the line service going into is based on the number of fixtures. And with the size of homes that we're building in Yorkville, we're very close in needing to increase the water line size. But then you start adding a sprinkler system, that could justify a larger sprinkler, or a larger water line. One thing I'd like to point out is, Bill didn't mention it, but he did lose a family member to a fire. And so if anybody has personal experience, he does. And for him to be arguing against a sprinkler system, I think tells you that, you know, he's seen both sides of it and could tell you personally how it's affected his family.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, anyone else in the audience on building code update?
That's Gary. Gary, you want to do a quick question?
One thing that I did forget to mention is, you know, we go on all day, but you talk about the people that make up the codes that we follow. You know, if they're looking at the codes they want to come up with, if there's no cost involved in their decision, then, you know, we're going to be here in five years and fighting people because they're going to want elevators in homes. I mean, where's it going to end? I mean, someone told me that you got four to five times better of dying from falling in an accident than dying in a fire. And this was what I was told at the Northern Home Builders meeting. You know, tell us we can't build two-story homes. You know, we can't put basements in, no stairs. I mean, where's it going to end? You've heard from other builders that, you know, there hasn't been a death in a new home. And, you know, I didn't want to bring it up, but yes, my sister lost an 18-month-old baby in a fire with her three-year-old. It was about an 800-square-foot home, two bedrooms upstairs, two rooms on the first floor, but the smoke detector wasn't even, there was no smoke detector. You know, she was sitting on the front porch. So, you know, a smoke detector, a working smoke detector, would have saved her life. And that's what you hear all the time, is what smoke detectors do. And if anything, I'm all for it anymore. But thank you, and I guess I can sign my name now.
Thank you.
Yeah, but what I was going to say, we can talk now and we can discuss this again when it comes back to us, but I think that was a good opportunity because we have all these experts here. So open up to the council for questions, comments, but I said it won't be coming back to us.
I just want to say that I also served on that committee, and the majority of people that were on that committee were builders or had something, they were directly involved with the home builders industry. And I just wanted to address some of the information that we received. If the chief's house cost $6,500 to put in a state-of-the-art sprinkler system, I mean, he even had the huts that were matched furniture, and it was just beautiful. He went above and beyond what most people would do. But yet, Mr. McHugh is quoting us a price at $10,000 to $15,000. And to me, that's quite the difference. We have the actual price that Mr. McHugh built the house, and that was the actual figure. And we had the police chief confirm that, number one. The other thing is, at the beginning of this committee, when we all met, we did have one representative from the Northern Homes Building Association, and he was talking about a home that he built, I believe it was Downers Grove. And he ended up quoting a very, very extremely high figure for a sprinkler system. And he brought in a quote from a manufacturer of a sprinkler system. And we questioned where the other requests for bids were. And he said, "Oh, no, he only got one." Which I kind of doubt if anybody only gets one quote if they're really trying to cut costs. And then the chief also questioned him and reviewed the quote that he brought in. And I believe he had copper piping and things that weren't necessary, very, very expensive items on this quote. So we kind of, you know, threw that one out the window. And I just want to address some of the information that we received. Oh, Mr. McHugh also said that he didn't have one person that, and he is a custom builder, a very good builder, but he never had one person that requested the sprinkler system. Never asked for that. And after him speaking, I think if somebody did say, you know, "What do you think about the sprinkler system?" And I think his response definitely would be all negative. And therefore, they wouldn't want a sprinkler system. And I can understand that.
Want to hear what I think?
Not yet. You'll get your turn again, I'm sure. Fire alarm system, he also quoted that you would have to have a fire alarm system with a sprinkler system. Those were his words, we have it on tape. Well, you said the insurance company would not honor one without the other. And I worked for an insurance company, and I never heard that, never. Okay. Let's see. And the big issue with the arc fault breakers, we also had two experts in this meeting. I mean, we just, it was educational. And they were two experts, I believe, and Krista, you can help me with this. One was teaching, yes, one was a licensed electrical worker, and he did teach for our local community, as well as install. And one was a building code official. Okay. And after all the debate with the builders and these two gentlemen, it was just educational for all of us. I just asked them upfront, if you were building a home today, would you have these arc fault breakers in your own personal home? And both of them replied immediately, "Yes, we would." That is the way to go. So again, my opinion with saving on this committee is a lot of the objections were based on cost. And I can understand that. But saving on this council, as many years as I've had, most of the years, I was on the public safety committee. And I, again, you cannot put a price on a life. And if you just save one life with a sprinkler system, to me, it's well worth it. Autumn Creek, the gentleman from Autumn Creek, I believe, said that we're going to lose sales because you can't afford it, and that's what your people had told you. And I could understand that. But also, and I'm going to look it up again, I didn't bring the documents with me, but Autumn Creek, I believe, advertises in another state that they have the sprinkler systems and things like that in their homes. Don't quote me on that until I bring the document in. Okay. But, I mean, that was your big selling point, and a lot of people were, I'm sure, building with that in mind because Polte...
No, they're required by Polte, making you sales. Can I say something?
No, hold on. Hold on, guys. All right, keep your comments from the floor. And then, Ron, you want to add your comment after Rose is done, please?
I just have a few more. We have been getting some builders in here and developers that were complaining about our permit fees being too high, and we should do something with that at this time. And I think that we made some deals with some people, I believe, in Blackberry. We had special things going on there. We granted them certain things, and they were supposed to be building, and it's not happening. And then, we had a gentleman here from Marker that said, "Keep in mind that the city is adopting the 2009 energy code." Well, it's not our decision, that's state mandated. You all have to abide by that, no matter where you are in the state, whether it's Yorkville or not. So I don't think we can use that as a debate. And again, we had Property Concepts indicate that, well, he believes that codes should be enforced also in all existing homes. And I would totally agree with that. And I think every builder that has built that home should go back and reconstruct it all. It should be up to the builders then. If you're going to throw it into the city and let you handle the expense, because I think that's a great idea. And I'd love to see that in all your homes, and mine as well. And I think that may be it. That's all I have.
I'm going to speak towards the flip side of Rose's opinion. I agree with the majority of the commentators out in this meeting. I was also at the demonstration where they showed the, you know, where they lit the fire and they showed what sprinklers can do. And I guess I'd like to go through some of this and talk about some of the things that they hit on and maybe expound on them a little more. First of all, upsizing the line from one inch to an inch and a quarter, an inch and a half is overkill for a home. A standard home nowadays uses 10 gallons per minute. Okay? 10 gallons per minute is plenty of water for a home. So to mandate that we, in these codes, talk about inch and a quarter or inch and a half being the new standard for water service line, there is a cost to that. And that cost not only falls upon them, but it falls upon us. We've got, and I know because I'm in the industry, I make, our company makes products for that. There's a huge cost to go from one inch to inch and a quarter to inch and a half. So not only are we putting a cost on the home builders, we're putting a cost on the residents. Then we're going to put a cost on our own city council to purchase materials and things to adapt those new sizes. That's the number one thing that we're, we need to keep in check. The other thing that we need to talk about in here is some of the things about maintenance, backflow protection. I know backflow protectors, I know RPZs, I know double checks, I know dual checks. The minimum that needs to be put in for these things is a double check or an RPZ. Those are very expensive, number one. So that expense, once again, is going to fall upon the homeowner. Okay? The other thing that is going to be an ongoing expense annually, which I mentioned in the meeting, is that backflow protection has to be, it has to be inspected, and it has to be maintained. And eventually, it'll have to be replaced. That is going to cost... That is gonna cost somewhere around about $100 a year. You actually have a homeowner's pocket to have that mandate put on them. And I just don't think it's a good time to do that. I just think that's, it's not a wise decision to move forward with that. Just bear with me a minute. We talked about the cost of what it's gonna add to a home, and, I mean, let's take conservatively $5,000 to the price of a new home. I know my home, I've lost equity like crazy. My home is probably worth what I bought it for now. To put $5,000 more onto the cost of the new home, when people are trying to figure out how they're gonna, how they're gonna preserve or get back to their nest egg which they thought they purchased, I just don't think that is something we should afford. And like I said, I'll be conservative about $5,000. I'm here in 10, 12, whatever it may be. I just don't think we should add that cost and put that burden on the home builders, and the homeowners, and people that already have homes that have lost value. It's just something that I just don't see a sense in doing right now. Just bear with me. And I think when it's time to discuss this all amongst council, I'll go through this code by code. But I just think what they're saying is very accurate. I do see the value in what we saw out there, but I just think, I agree with the fact that the smoke detectors are what's gonna save the lives. And I think that going forward with this is just, it's a bad idea. So, to keep it brief, and I'll discuss all these individually when it come time. But if you look around, Rose, and you looked at some of the ones in the building code inquiry, where they listed the cities, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, out of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, wait, hold on. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 12 of them, out of all the ones listed, which were the majority, have not adopted this. And there's a reason for that. The reason for that is it's not, it's not gonna help promote growth here. It's not gonna help with home values. It's not gonna help with cost to the homeowners, it's not gonna help with cost to the home builders. I just think it's, there's a reason why this is heavy, there's a heavy debate to this. And I, and I know, not just from a debate amongst residents, but a debate amongst cities. I mean, I call on cities, I talk to public works departments. I know there's a big debate on what that cost and what those mandates are gonna do to the city. So it's something to consider when we move to this and we discuss this further. I appreciate the time.
Any other comments during this public hearing from the council?
A staff has to, like, to make a comment, just a point of clarification on some of the...
Do you want to do that, or you wanna let this gentleman speak first?
Either way, that's fine.
Okay, go ahead, Kristi, and then we're gonna move on.
Yeah, I'd just like to address what Rose said. She compared the chief's house at $6,500. I thought I heard that that was a 2,900 square foot range. If you do a two-story, 35,000 square foot two-story, common sense is it's gonna be close to double that. The actual prices are from 12,000 to 15,000 in a good-sized home. And this may not be the time to bring this back up again, but you were saying there's relief from permits. We came in here, and there were $20,000. And council wrote here, invited to take off the loading fee of $2,000, but they're paying $18,000, which was, not knowing what other communities are doing. And then when it came time to sign the papers, they put it back in, but I have to put that rein back in anyway. So I got moving on that, that's for another subject. But we've got moving on, and I'm building about 10 houses right now, not one in Yorkville. Kendall County, I'm building in Kendall County, I'm building in Maplewood. For $25,000, people are not gonna come to Yorkville, and they have other choices. It's a great community, and that's why they brought in here, but you're killing yourselves. And if you think these permits aren't hurting, and then you throw this on top, the rooftops aren't coming, and I'd be glad to sell out our subdivision to take over to the lowest point, because the people are, the people, it's very hard to work with some of these figures you're throwing out there. They're just not realistic. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, a little question.
No, one of them you want, though. Kristi, why don't you finish up?
Thanks, yeah.
We have a long agenda here. Thank you.
Sure, dear. We should have a...
Just a clarification on staff's recommendation. The water sizing is not based upon the fire suppression system, it's based upon the Illinois State Plumbing Code, which we have to enforce. And the one and a half pipe is being, each pipe is being implemented in a lot of communities because it's to accommodate the 34 fixture units that would trigger a one and a half, you know, service line. So that, it has no relation to the fire suppression system, that's one thing. Another thing, the NEC staff is recommending the 2008. You can take out the arc fault requirement. The reason why staff is going with the 2008 is because it's compatible with the 2009 international codes. There was a recommendation for the 2005 sight unseen. Staff hadn't reviewed it in comparison to the 2009 standards, and neither had the building code update committee. That's why we're going with the 2008. With the requirement for fire suppression system, it does not have to be enacted now. You can approve it and set out a date. If you look, most of our communities that are being built, our subdivisions have fee and building code locks. Blackberry Woods, they have their building code locked. They still build to the 2000 standard until 2018. Autumn Creek has a building code locked to 2015, Bristol Bay to 2018. A lot of these builders and buildings that have subdivisions do have fee locks, so they wouldn't affect, if this code was adopted, any of those major builders that are still building, and thank you, Polte, right now. It would not affect them now because they have code locks. This is something, as the community development director, I am charged with over the building department with life safety issues, far beyond the construction of the home once the builder's gone, but for our residents who continue to stay here. And these are why the recommendations were made.
Mary, just one quick question, maybe a clarification, Kristi.
Mm-hmm.
The majority of communities around here, and I venture to say across the country, because I'm in the industry, are not mandating that homes require inch and a quarter, inch and a half lines. They're just not doing it. And I can tell you that, 'cause I call on them, I know that. So, you know, we can talk about it, whether it's relational to fire sprinklers or not, but they're just not, they're not accepting it, 'cause it doesn't, it's way overkill, and it's burdensome. So that's just something to think about.
Where is this going next? Are we sending this back to committee for discussion, or I guess, could I ask the council, where do we want this to go next? Seems like there's still a lot of discussion that needs to go on with this, and probably best done at committee level.
EDC has already reviewed the individual staff recommendations, and that's how it got to public hearing. Did we have a recommendation as to the actual approval process from here?
Yeah, staff's recommendation from the building code update committee, we have our recommendations. EDC, it's now the city council opportunity after the public hearing to vote on it.
The votes is yours.
Okay, I'll have to go back to it in two weeks, and I won't be prepared to discuss it.
Let me ask a question. When we vote on this, are we voting on each individual code separately? We're not just saying, here's the, here's the updates, yea or nay, right? I mean, we're gonna go through the observation code, we're gonna go through the electrical code. And then the other issue I had was, there's several other communities that have not adopted, a lot of the communities that have not even adopted the energy code, which is obviously required by the state of Illinois, which, don't get me started on requirements by the state of Illinois. So, the concern I have, the question I have was, what if we don't adopt the energy codes? I mean, if they're required, why don't they just pass a state law that says this is the law?
They have.
So why do we have to adopt them?
Because we have to have them in our codebooks as documentation that that's what we're following.
So what happens, and my question is, what happens if we don't adopt it? Do we have PR bills?
Uh, we, I mean, when it comes to a plan reviewer, our plan reviewer will look at our codes, and if it's not in the code, it'll be hard for them, if a developer challenges it, to enforce, even though they can go back to the state, lean back on the state code. It's easier enforcement-wise that we adopt it and have it in our code.
Well, just to make my position clear on the sprinkler issue, I don't think we need to put the additional burden on the homeowner. I won't vote for a code that has a requirement for a sprinkler for residential property. I haven't heard any compelling reason why I should change my vote. So, I mean, if the code comes back to us, written in any way, shape, or form that residential sprinklers are required, even at a future date, I would vote against it. So that's just where I stand, so everybody knows. The very fact that we have some of these subdivisions locked in on the old code till 2018 just tells me that the old code is fine. I mean, the houses are firing apart, the houses aren't blowing up, the houses aren't burning down. Sometimes I think we do change for change's sake, and I'm glad that this was reviewed, because it needs to be reviewed. But I don't think that sometimes we just need to change for change's sake. So, I'll look at the final draft, or whatever you guys come up with, and vote accordingly. But I would like to vote on each one individually, obviously, and that's where we stand.
And we may wanna make our packet light that evening, 'cause if we're gonna do that and vote on each individual code, we're also going to vote on each individual suggestion for amendment to different components of those sections that can make for a lot of meetings. So just a suggestion.
Okay, man.
Maybe you should...
Okay, okay, that's also all I have. But I'm not really going to public hearing, and forward. Next is citizen comments, and comments on any other topics.
I do, I'm a lady. It was brought to my attention, that you are going to accord Art Vasco to the planning commission. I'm standing up here in the room from everybody who's saying I humanly deny or request that we do not use. Vasco administration is the major cause of our current economic situation in City Yorkville, with the questionable annexation agreements that resulted in lawsuits that are still paying legal bills on, the mass annexation of subdivisions that have drawn, dragged this town down financially with water and sewer extensions. Not to say that Mr. Vasco is personally responsible, I'm not saying that. His administration, we are feeling the effects now. To put someone like that on this committee, planning commission, to plan what? Plan more disaster for this town? I notice that the slap in the face of all, some of the owners, some of them who are totally against it, with the landfill, the slap in the face of people in this town that work so hard, and are trying hard enough to put it back on track. Putting it on the order is wrong. And, maybe shoot beside.
Anyone else?
I have someone's pair of glasses up there, okay.
Well, I have two subjects. One, we had to do a little bit of the sprinkler thing, but I heard Rose say you couldn't put a value on one's life, and the additional costs were well worth it for the sprinkler system. I'd like to thank that committee for their work and the debate on those building codes, and I look forward to more discussion on this council and those subjects. But, Miss Brees, if you can make that argument about the cost for sprinklers, then I don't understand the opposition to a minimal cost for the shared-use trails, after all, we've already lost one city resident on Kennedy Road to that expense. New subject. It's interesting to me to see that Mayor Golinsky is appointing former Mayor Vasco tonight to the city planning commission. He's chosen Vasco as a replacement for Ann Lucetto, the current chairman, who has served on the planning commission since 1990. Ann is an experienced mechanical engineer with construction management experience. She has worked for ComEd, Fermilab, or you worked, Gary, in Caterpillar, and has now employed building and industrial planning at Odeon. She is a former national president of the Society of Women Engineers. She lives right on the border of Yorkville on the north side of Blackberry Creek, just west of Route 47 off of Cannonball Trail. Through 1990, Ms. Lucetto served on the city's library board from 1988 to 1990, serving a second treasure. That's a commitment of 23 years of public service to the city of Yorkville. In all accounts, Ms. Lucetto has served the city with distinction. Our current mayor hasn't even lived here in Yorkville for 10 years. This appointment is not based on expertise, but politics. Ann also formed the Kendall County Pancreas Union that helped heal some of the resentments of maybe in smaller communities harbored against Yorkville after the land-grabbing and hard- hitting espoused by the Vasco administration. I hear the reason Ms. Lucetto is being discarded is because she doesn't live within city limits. According to state statute, that isn't a disqualifying factor. As long as she lives within one and a half miles of the city limits, she is eligible to serve on the planning commission. That is a state statute. We all know what happens when cities ignore the opinions of people who live outside their borders, I being one of them. But here we go again. Mayor Golinsky is recommending for appointment a former mayor whose leadership has resulted in multiple lawsuits being filed against the city, resulting in lawsuits of hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars. The city just settled one of those lawsuits for $100,000. Another one for breach contract was filed by a landlord on the north side. And there is administration in cities encouraged someone who wanted to bring in a landfill, and litigation has went on for four years and has cost the city over $1 million. Back in 2007, when Mayor Bird appointed Jeff Baker and reappointed Ann Lucetto to the planning commission, then Alderman Golinsky attacked her for appointing buddy called her political cronies. He had no proof of any cronyism, but that didn't stop him. The fact that Ms. Baker lived on Houston, a few blocks away from Mayor Bird, from Mayor Bird, was his damning evidence. He didn't even realize that Ms. Lucetto had even served on the planning commission for 17 years at that time. Well, if those appointments were cronyism, what is this? Mr. Vasco is the one who appointed Mr. Golinsky to the city council in 2007. He's someone who could be given credit for starting Mr. Golinsky's political career. There are members of this council sitting here tonight reacting, campaigned against the landfill, and formally attacked Mayor Vasco for his actions as mayor. Now, you are considering voting to give this former mayor a force and advising you on development issues. I think if you vote in favor of this appointment tonight, you'll be sending Yorkville residents a clear message about your integrity and what you really stand for. And as for Mayor Golinsky, when Mayor Bird reappointed a long-serving member of the library board just a few months ago, you asked him, how can you sleep at night? Maybe you'd like to answer your own question now, in regards to this planning commission appointment you are now trying to make tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Your Honor. Your Honor, I'm sorry, I'm gonna try to make this as quick as I can. I know it's been a long night already. A lot of the issues, I'm gonna cut right through the trailers chase and everything, and...
and get to the heart of the matter. The things that I oppose with, and I hope this council understands, and I want to make clear, but the things that I oppose and that I speak strongly against are not necessarily because this council wants to do something or it's something that goes against my belief, but are just things that don't make sense with this state, that they overreach with their power. There's the, we were told about the grinds, Your Honor, but having to make changes on those, it's going to cost several thousands of dollars. Again, I've been in manufacturing for over 25 years. I've seen everything going from blueprints with erasers, different kinds of pencils, et cetera, et cetera, to CAD/CAM software. Your Honor, to make these changes, okay, if the state has somebody that knows how to do this, yes, it is work, it's not the thousands of dollars that they're talking about. Alderman Muntz over there said that we need, this council needs to run this place like a business. They really need to justify those costs. There's no statute, there's no law that can justify what those, why it costs thousands of dollars to make those changes. I'm also concerned, Your Honor, that this council is an infancy. If we don't start challenging things now and we let them pressure this council, that that sets the stage for the next few years. We got them. You caved on one thing, you'll cave on another. We've got a cash cow, there is. These people will pay. All we have to do is go through that council, all right? Your Honor, one of the cases, I don't trust the state government. This is a picture of Shelley Faulkner. I've talked to her, okay? She had a daughter, she has a daughter. She was 12, 13 years old, all right? To make a long story short, she told us, she told us in a meeting one night, her daughter's diabetic, distressed between puberty and the diabetes got to her. She went to school one day, told the school I'm being abused to get even with mom. The state took her away, didn't question the mom. After they had taken her away, they called the mother in, the daughter was gone already. Now, the state, because this is for the community good, for the good of the child, took her to get treated for her diabetes. They did this by putting her into a mental institute. While in that mental institute, she was raped not once, not twice, but three times. This is a teenage, this is a teenage girl. She was not allowed to talk to her mother until Mother's Day. On Mother's Day, she was given the instructions, "You will call your mother, you have 10 seconds. You will say hello, mother, Happy Mother's Day, I'm fine," and then you'll hang up. Your Honor, the other, the other reason, another reason is the usage tax that the governor passed this year, okay? Again, I agree with the Constitution. The Constitution says you cannot pass a law, make it go retroactive, and then charge somebody with, with a crime. Yet, that's exactly what he did. He takes this usage tax law, okay, goes back to July of 2004, all right? You are now responsible, everybody in here is a criminal. The evidence, if you look at your Illinois tax forms, you have until October of this year to pay any usage tax going back to 2004. He grants this under the status of amnesty. Who gets amnesty? Criminals. He's saying, "I'm already a criminal unless I pay this." This tax that goes back to a law that didn't exist in 2004. I've had people tell me, "Your Honor, it's $3, Jesse." Shut up, just pay it, be done with it. Your Honor, the first $0 to $10,000, you're charged $3. If you bought nothing, you still owe a $3 tax. It's $3, Jesse. It's nothing. Your Honor, in December 16, 1773, a group of men traspassed onto a ship, broke in and entered, took all the cabins that were in there, destroyed them, threw them out into the river, stood up. They armed themselves against British law enforcement over a penny tax for every 10 pounds of tea. Your Honor, I'm sure you read the cover of the newspaper this past week. There was one thing that irks me, I recognize, Your Honor, that I am not protected from being offended. If somebody wants to offend me, that's fine, but this particular story that there are seven of the 11 of you here getting health care, you should be ashamed of yourselves. Your Honor, I give you this quote, "Capital is reckless of the health or length of life of the laborer unless compulsion from society." But the newspaper, in my interpretation, my opinion, was trying to say you shouldn't have this, okay? Because we, the taxpayers, are paying it. It puts a burden on us. Some people may have bought into it. That quote, Your Honor, that you shouldn't, you deserve nothing and that you should be working for free, comes from Karl Marx. It was also Karl Marx who said, "Democracy is the road to socialism." Your Honor, it's no crime to take a benefit if it's being offered to you. That's my opinion. Everybody else in here would do the same thing. Take the governor's spokeswoman. She accepted a $34,000 a year raise just this year. Never made the headlines. Your Honor, there is another reason. The paper says that you, that they got the information through the Freedom of Information Act. Couple of years ago, the governor made sweeping legislation, he called it. He is the governor, he is up here, you mayor are down here, so is the rest of this council. If the governor tells you, in fact, the governor did tell you, "You will assign one person to handle this Freedom of Information Act," you will make this simple. You will grant it. If the city doesn't do it, it's a fine between $2,000 and $5,000. Why? Because Governor Clinton is the governor. At the same time, a couple of years later perhaps, people start growing weary of the governor, the governor passes new sweeping legislation on the same Freedom of Information Act. The governor says, "You are held to that standard, but I have a different standard." If my Alderman starts asking for too many requests, they can be bothersome, I can just consider them burdensome, worrisome, I don't have to answer them. I get a different level of rules than you do. In addition, Your Honor, Lisa Madigan used the Freedom of Information Act to try to make public the names of everybody who owned a firearm, and in her remarks were, "Anyone who owns a gun does not have a right to privacy." Your Honor, trying to move forward on these trails, while I still agree, I still feel that it's an unnecessary expense. I would like to see that if this council does go forward, we know what the cost of that is and the overall project. I would like to see the management of this where it's broken down in steps so that we know from this date to this date, this thing's going to be done, it's going to cost us this much, we get the invoice, it's paid. As opposed to other projects that have been run by the state of Illinois where this is what it's going to cost, that it was overrun here and we didn't see this, and this thing continued on and everything, next thing you know, there's a tax being placed on us. I would also ask, Your Honor, that this council be very careful in asking who is going to be doing the work. Is it the Illinois Department of Transportation or are they going to be utilizing independent contractors? And if they are going to be using independent contractors, who do the, who do the liabilities? Who assumes the risks, the costs, et cetera? I can't answer those questions. That's something this council's going to have to check into, Your Honor. In addition, if they use, if you do proceed with the, with the trails, Your Honor, I would also ask, and they do utilize an independent contractor, I think they ought to be bonded as well. If that, if that trail falls apart, something happens to it, they should have the money to repair it. Even though I disagree with Alderman Teeling over there pushing this thing, there are people in her ward, there are people that she's gotten money for, I still believe that they should be protected with, that their investment dollars and good faith should be protected. Your Honor, I hope that you understand, I'm trying to make clear, what I'm trying to make clear is, I know that this is a big burden that's been put on you in the city. On the outside, the average person, we've had two votes on this, they've done no, now the city wants to proceed. It appears that way. Whether it's true or not, whether, what the reasons are, it's immaterial. And I think of nothing else, our citizens deserve to have confidence in our government, especially during these tough times. Your Honor, if I've been a little rough or arrogant with you or with this council, I apologize to you, sir. And whatever decision you decide, I ask God to bless you and his council, grant you the wisdom that you need to proceed in the work that you have to do. Thank you, Your Honor. I yield the floor back to you and this council. Thank you. Any other comments?
My name is Tom Gilmore, and I can only hope that I can surpass the Speaker. I really regret having to make this statement tonight, but I would appreciate the attention of the city council and consider what I may say. I'm here to comment on Mayor's appointment of former Mayor Art Pajaska to the plan commission. I'm disappointed in the mayor's charge for this appointment due to the former mayor's involvement in the proposed landfill development. I want to focus my comments primarily on his administration's involvement in becoming a conduit for citing Foxborough's landfill. And why I think this should be the reason enough to deny the former mayor's appointment to the plan commission. First of all, his administration tried to deceive six prospective developers along Foxroad Corridor leading to the proposed landfill property on Route 71. This was revealed in the so-called confidential memos dated April 2006. In these memos, it was explained that the city needed the annexation of these developments in order to form a contiguous corridor leading to the landfill property. The memo also stated the need to keep this information from developers. Risky ways to pay for utilities for these developments were also suggested to expedite the annexation. Secondly, the mayor also tried to deceive the public by saying the annexation was made about the landfill, although the proposed landfill was discussed throughout the memos. Also in the memos was the admission that Yorkville would be impacted in excess by the proposed landfill in terms of traffic and smell, not just environmentally. To me, this shows a complete disregard for the health, safety, and quality of life for the residents of both city and the surrounding areas. In summary, someone who has deceived the community in the past should not be put in a position of planning development in Yorkville. This city's involvement with the proposed landfill has cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars over the past five years in legal fees stemming from this lawsuit. Look around you. Are you happy with the problems, developments that came under the former mayor's administration? I would like to urge you to please not make this appointment tonight, but whether to continue to look for qualified candidates. Finally, my motto is, you only get one chance to do a development, and you need to do it right. And it's a very, very important decision that all of you make along with the plan commission in the choices of the way we build out this community. It impacts us all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Poole. I'm an eight-year resident here in Yorkville, so I guess I'm a newbie compared to some of you folks here. And I'm up here as a concerned citizen, and hopefully, I came here to Yorkville, a small town charm. What attracted me, I wanted this to be my retirement community, and I want to speak tonight about Art. And Art has been a good mayor, he did a lot of good things for our town. See, and I've been here eight years since 2003, but as Todd has said, and Todd presented a number of the facts that happened during his administration, I'd like to reinforce what they say, and I would not recommend him to be our planning commissioner due to the, you know, the things that were done under his administration. Like I said, he did a lot of good things, but the things, you know, it is what it is and what's happened. The landfill was mentioned, I was involved with that for four years and went to every hearing and really disappointed what went on and what it's done to our community, maybe forever. I mean, it's definitely had an impact financially as well as some of these builders were driven away, so I would not recommend Art. And I reinforce what Todd and Tom said, so is a mayor and as a city council, very seriously consider this position, and if you need to get more candidates, that's what I would recommend. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm just a Yorkville resident. Been here since 2003, went through all these processes with the landfill issue. I'm tired of paying for legal expenses for elected officials that basically were derelict in their duty to the taxpayers of Yorkville and paying their legal expenses for that reason. I am very upset about that, and I think Art Pajaska and the alleged incidents that he's been accused of has demonstrated a lack of fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Yorkville, and I don't believe he deserves recognition to be put on this appointment. Anybody else?
All right, moving forward, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So, Luke?
First.
Actually, don't we have to amend the point of art, Your Honor?
Actually, don't we have to amend the point of art, your honor? I know at the initial onset of the meeting, we talked about the final numbers, but there are two line items specifically that I think we should amend by motion on the bill list itself before we vote on the consent agenda. Am I correct, or?
No, this is the one. We always do it by one last term. It's always approved by one last.
No, I understand, but the paid list, the bill list, the two payments that were erroneous were never officially moved to amend those two line items. So I just want to amend those two line items before we vote on it. The only thing that was voted out, the only thing that was mentioned was the new total, but never specifically the two line items. So just for prosperity and the record-keeping, I think we should amend the two line items for clarification purposes.
Can we for the record assume that the change in, in the total reflects, reflects a change on page one of the bill list for the YMSY properties changed from $130,000 to $6,400? And that sum, the revised sum also reflects for the record, page 17 of the bill list, Big Bend Builders Chapman has been changed from $596.70 to $569.70. Thank you.
Does correct. Roll call, please.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Lushuski?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Moncazner?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Cut.
Aye.
Next is minutes for approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes at the city council from May 24th, 4:11, and June 14th, 4:11 as presented.
So move. Second.
Comments or questions on either set of minutes?
Jackie.
Jackie.
On the May 24th minutes, we tabled those, there were corrections, thank you for making them, but they're still on page 15 of 15 under the executive session. It's still out of order. We have the mayor entertaining the motion, it's not reflected. Who moved and seconded until after the roll call? If you could flip that, please. On page 15 of 15, under the executive session, you have Mayor Gilinski entertaining the motion to go into executive session and listed the reasons, but you have your motion being approved right after that without showing who moved or seconded.
Has Boson moved and seconded by Spears?
You should have your vote after that.
The future minutes.
I would like the future minutes.
That's the way you.
The, under May 24th meeting, under section two, I'm sorry, in the public hearings, the first speaker to speak is, actually I'm a resident of my ward, his last name is Steepner, S.S. Steepner, S.T.E.E.P.N.E.R. So if we can just correct his last name for the record, I would appreciate it.
You said public hearing, did you mean specific comments?
I'm sorry, specific comments, yes. He's the first speaker.
And what was the name again?
S.T.A.G.N.E.R. I figured, thank you.
The first name on the bottom line was?
Yeah, it's Waw.
Waw. So I'll correct that then?
Please.
On page three, second paragraph, what we are asking you to do to continue participating in our monthly stakeholder meeting instead of state? Stake?
Stake.
Yeah. Oh, I know.
Jackie made some corrections, but I didn't catch them.
And then we have on page five, under Public Works Committee Report, the second sentence, informational item, and asked City Administrator Olson if he wanted to inform. Oh, all you have to do is take the period out. Yeah. I was not reading it that way.
Anyone else on minutes?
I think I have one more. On page nine of 15, I'm going to count from the bottom, it'll be easier. The 11th sentence up, it's Alderman Spears asked if City Administrator Olson could answer this question. She stated Alderman Olson said the last contractor hasn't been paid. Instead of hasn't paid. And there's just one more. She had a question.
Go back and correct them in these minutes?
Yeah.
And then also?
No, no. In the prospective minutes, you know all of the corrections that are going back.
So I don't need to correct them actually in these?
Okay. And on page, oh, I'm sorry.
We have to correct these minutes for the official book. And show them in the next minutes.
And then, click on last one, page 14, the Community Analysis Report, I attended the MEIL, N.E.I.L., instead of Illinois Board Meeting?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Okay, I attended the MEIL, and that's just all capital letters, N.E.I.L., instead of Illinois. And then, it says Alderman Spears asked for citizens to contact their senators for disapproval of the budget, or disapproval, and then the budget deadline is. And thank you. And I could understand with the equipment the way it is, too. Thank you.
Anyone else on minutes? So we should approve the minutes as amended. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Production wise, we both tend to agree. Correct. Okay, moving on to Mayor's report, I will entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Arthur F. Pones to the Plan Commission. Do we hear the motion? So move.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Paul George. Just to make it brief, I could go on and on about why I don't feel Art should be appointed to this commission, and Gary, I've spoke to you about this personally. I feel that Art's involvement in the past administration was detrimental to the city. The deals that were cut with developers, his actions as our mayor and CEO of that administration, and his, you know, his, basically his actions in general, I believe, let the city hold in the back and cost the residents and the taxpayers. I feel that it's bad, it's a bad idea for Art to serve on this commission and put him back in a position as an advisory for development, for the city of Yorkville. And I agree 100%. I don't agree with Todd on much, but I do agree 100% that putting him back in any sort of advisory position to this city council after what's transpired in the past is shameful. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I can't approve this appointment either based on what Alderman Gilson has said and the members of our, the citizens' comments that we heard today, and I was going to elaborate on that, but they did a great job. I don't need to.
Anyone else?
When I looked at this appointment, it was a difficult decision for me because I've known Art for several years now, and I think he's a good man. I think he made mistakes in the past. No administration is perfect. I think he did some good things for Yorkville, and I think he did some not-so-good things for Yorkville. And sometimes it's hard to make these decisions when you're up here, and you know everybody involved, you know the players, you know the people for them, you know the people against them, so you just have to vote with your gut. I'm going to vote to appoint Art to the commission simply for the fact, because I respect our mayor, I think that he has to make the decision as to who gets on these commissions, and this body that we are appointing to him is an advisory body, and ultimately, any decision that they make will have to be approved by us anyway. So I feel there's enough safeguards that if we don't like something that Art is doing, that ultimately, it's our decision. So here we have a man who's willing to step up. It might not surprise many of you that we don't get a lot of applications for these positions. They're unpaid, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work for very little acknowledgement and thanks from the residents. So I will appoint, I will vote to appoint Art. I think everybody deserves an opportunity to serve the community if they wish to do so. None of us are perfect, and if he does get on this commission, I wish him the best. And I hope he has a new opportunity to, to have a voice for the residents of Yorkville.
Question from the mayor.
Do you remember the current appointments? Isn't the mayor like just, is it just, I said council, but I don't remember where we were voting, all these appointments, all these committees?
Yeah. We consent to the same job, so.
Yeah, you do.
Go ahead, Chris.
Real quick, I was surprised to see the application and the recommendation for appointment for Art after everything that's transpired over the years. It really did surprise me to see this. But like Colosimo said, you know, people do make mistakes, no charges filed, whatever the, he's willing to step up, we do have our safeguards. This isn't an advisory committee, and if somebody has an interest that's not in the best interest of the city, it's our responsibility, we ultimately take that responsibility on ourselves. And if he were to be appointed, we're taking that responsibility, that liability, because we are the ones that are first off consenting to appoint and then taking those recommendations. That's our job to either take them or not take those recommendations. I have given this a lot of thought, and for somebody that's taken as much abuse as he has and is willing to still come back, it says a lot for that person. And I know this is not going to make a lot of people happy, but I will recommend that his approval to this council or to the Plan Commission, and it's something that we will have to just look at. I mean, the recommendations are maybe something we have to consider, but I think it's just our responsibility to move forward on this.
Anyone else from the council?
And Alderman Colosimo said that we didn't have a lot of applicants, but we did have an applicant, Ann Lucietto, who has served on the Plan Commission and is qualified to be on the Plan Commission, and she was the chairman of the Plan Commission for the last four years.
We also had another applicant, which I also thought would have done a nice job, but, you know, it's my belief that you can see there's definitely a tug out there about appointing Art to this commission, wait, see who else comes in, and spend some time on putting the right person in on this advisory board. I just think this is something we should not move forward doing.
I agree.
I just want to say, too, for the record, in the past, before when the landfill stuff started, and I never really actually saw this picture, I wish I could have got a copy, but I believe I was one of the people portraying Nazi outfits marching behind Mayor Verhaska, and I voted against the landfill at the end. So somebody was a little put the cart before the horse there. So Art has done a lot of good things for the city, obviously, the landfill issue goes on the other side, but I agree with him, I disagree with him when he was mayor in the city council, and a couple people said, it's just an advisory board, they can't really do anything without Art's advice anyway. So it's gonna be a tough call either way, I'm still making it in my head, but, yeah, maybe we've got a picture of that, I would like to get it someday.
I got it.
You do? Email it or?
Well, that's what I should have behind you. I mean, I thought Art was perfect for the Plan Commission with his knowledge, experience, history with the city. He's done a lot for the city over the years, I thought it was a good choice. Over the years, I've talked to Art on many, many issues, and whether I agree or disagree with him, I've always valued his opinion, and that's what I look for as an advisory board member. So, you know, I don't understand all the controversy, but I think he's done more for the city than a lot of people in this room. And look at some of the development that went on under his administration. I mean, starting with Jewel, Menards, Camel Marketplace, Rush Copper that's putting in a stand-in, standalone emergency center, Raging Waves Water Park, I mean, the development has been phenomenal in my mind, and I thought it was a good fit.
You know, Gary, just keep in mind, it doesn't stop at the landfill. That was just one major part of the even bigger picture, some of the things we can't talk about, and some of the things we all are very well aware of, including mistakes that, you know, everybody makes mistakes, and I'm one of them. But when you make a mistake, you own up to it. And, you know, just recently, you know, I can remember, and you just used the term of Al Dazka, and I respectfully disagree, that when you don't collect debt or deposits from developers, and you cost the city millions of dollars, which is what happened, to this day, that hasn't been known up to. To this day, that was stated as, we have safeguards in place, well, respectfully to everyone. The safeguard we had in place was raising the taxes and taking the money back out of our residents' pockets. And that's not a safeguard, there's no safeguard about that. So, you know, let's please, before we move forward with this, once again, take a step back, don't just think about the one component, which is the involvement in that whole landfill process. Take a step back and look at everything that's transpired, and once again, I'd please request that you, you wait on this.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Moncazner?
Aye.
Lushuski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Nay.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut.
Aye.
Okay, next is a motion to approve the appointment of Lisa Pickerer as Deputy Clerk.
Second.
Questions or comments on the Deputy Clerk appointment?
Deputy Clerk.
Deputy Clerk.
I have a question. I never got in the packet. Do we get anything on that?
No, there's nothing in the bag.
Okay, okay.
Oh, she is the Deputy Clerk.
Oh, I just didn't, I wasn't sure if there was something I missed there.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosimo?
Aye.
Moncazner?
Aye.
Lushuski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut.
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next is the Public Works, I got agreement for reconstruction, here we go. Are there some motion on here?
Just be in apartment circle, we send more to I Doc.
There's no vote, we're not voting on I Doc agreement.
Just looking our direction on a few items and general input.
One minute, number three. So there's the I Doc agreement for reconstruction about 47, and another twisted Troy saga. So we got five, we're not filed, but new estimates from I Doc regarding our share of the 47 project, and it went down about $900,000. So the original estimate was at the 3.58 million, the new estimate is 2.625 million, difference of about $900,000.
Difference of about $900,000. So, start with asking for direction in light of this new cost savings. Are we still proceeding with what we talked about before, taking out all the amenities? I need to get some phone calls from downtown businesses, ask for us not to remove these items from the downtown aesthetics. There are developers looking to invest a lot of money in the downtown, there are also ways not to remove these aesthetics. Their concern is if we don't do it now, it'll never get done. So.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, it's like, if there's foxes in the railings or not, or if there's the little paver and the abandonedness, is that really gonna stop them developing? And I think, if we could save money in addition to this, I'm offered to stick to the word we were talking about saving originally. I mean, that money could go to roads, it could go to a lot of things. And I would think some of the little foxes in the railing, they're really, like, that big difference. No, no.
Yeah, I agree with you, Muntz. Anytime we can cut, I think we should cut. Furthermore, you know, they had the estimate of 3.6, now it's, I'm sorry, 3.4, now it's 2.5, $900,000 less. Well, if we say, "Don't take the things out," and then six months from now, say, "Oh, the estimate is no longer 2.6, it is now 3.1," now we can't go back and say, "Okay, now take the things out again." I mean, we told the residents, we tried to trim this project down, we caught up about a quarter million dollars additional out of the project. I don't think that, like Marty said, the foxes and the stamped concrete are gonna keep businesses from coming to Yorkville. It's everything else that we offer that are gonna make businesses come to Yorkville. So, I still think we cut the quarter million dollars additional, and I'm grateful that it went down, $900,000, just make it 1.15 that we're saving, great, so.
I also agree with that, we should take them out of the project. I don't think that's gonna kill developers coming to Yorkville, and I certainly don't think it's gonna kill development in the downtown area. Are we gonna go through some of, should we go through some of these now? 'Cause I do have some questions on some of these things. Can I go through that now and ask those questions?
Sure.
Okay. On page two, paragraph three of page one, I know it's, these are, you know, it looks like it's from Brad to Bart, and talks about some of the things that are being asked. Does anybody come up with any reason why we'd wanna take on that short finish to Walgreens? I know it's a question, but have we gotten any sort of an idea as to why? Yeah. Brad, can you comment?
Yes, it was that regarding the, uh, the roadway. And apparently it was agreed by city staff sort of, this was something they had to discuss, we did review, meeting minutes in the past, and in fact, that was on the board.
The issue there was, you have kind of a unique access point. If you're familiar with the two ride-in, well, actually, it's a ride-in, ride-out, and there's almost a full access point in front of Hossell Tire and then Blockbuster. And so if you're going northbound IDOT 47, and you wanna turn into Walgreens, you have to turn in back Hossell Tire and then use the frontage road. That frontage road doesn't meet IDOT standards, and they're actually, they're maintaining it right now, correct? And so they came to us and said, "That's not in our manual, and we're not going to maintain it in the future." So the only reason, the only way that it's going to be replaced in its entirety is if the city agrees to maintain it. So, since it was a short stretch of road, and it gives access to the businesses there, we felt that it was reasonable to leave in years ago.
Can I request that we get a copy of those minutes? I'd like to see who agreed to that, and the reasons as to why they agreed to that. And, you know, I guess my question, once again, is, IDOT was maintaining it, right? And now they come to us and say, "They're not gonna maintain it?"
Correct. And they said they weren't, and if they weren't even gonna let us shut it.
So, so once again, there's a rigid straw law to take it over, because otherwise, they're not gonna maintain it, correct?
They weren't gonna be rebuilding.
Okay, so they were just gonna leave it as is?
No. It was not gonna be built again, it was gonna be rebuilt.
They're not gonna put in 47. Okay. The next question I have is page five, letter H, Fox Street. Since pavement section roughly seems inadequate, a minimum of six foot of asphalt should be provided, will this add extra costs to us?
I did respond with some of their comments, and it was a mistake, it was a typo, it's supposed to be six inches, and that would be included as part of the cost, I believe.
He's calling from the email, page five, letter H, Fox Street. Page eight, letter Q, safety accommodations? Cost responsibility is not indicated on this agreement, have we got any sort of response back on that yet?
The response was, there were several valuable pieces to add, I don't know how the exact response, but it's something.
He's got the concerns, he's in the mayor's hand, he's just going through the concerns that's super bad. Okay, okay.
And just to let you know, I did respond to our comments individually at the staff level. They've provided justification for each one of them, based on policy or past decision. So that is something we can forward along to you, just didn't make the packet in time. I think we compile these on Thursday or Friday, Friday morning packets, when I'm Friday evening, so.
Okay. Next one is page eight, letter, crosswalk, flashing beacon minutes. The comments were, if it's necessary, or it'd be much safer to have pedestrian sidewalks on Main Street where there'll be, where there's a traffic signal with pedestrian signals. So if we remove those, is that gonna cost us anything? Before we knew it, this is gonna cost us, so, you know, we're talking about these things and talking about comments, if we say no to that, is that gonna cost us any time delay on it?
These questions might actually be easier answered if I just forward you the email to IDOT, 'cause they did address each one individually. So, and again, they're not asking specifically for comments on every other section of the committee tonight. Mainly, they're looking for direction on stamping, coloring, fencing, and trails.
And the reason why I'm asking you now is, if you're doing a boatload of that stuff, and you don't know how much this stuff is gonna cost, or this is gonna be a delay, you kinda should have the whole picture, right? I mean, I, it's just a thought, but.
From what I gathered from reading the email, there was nothing in our questions or their answers that specifically delayed the project, or delayed the project, or cost additional money. It was merely clarification or justification based on past decisions.
So adding sidewalk, page nine, letter T, that's not gonna cost any additional? You're just gonna throw that in there? And I just, I don't, I see these things, these questions, and they say, "There's no sidewalk on the west side of 47 from both the Menards, who open point to approximately 600 feet south of Kenny Road." There's nothing in there, so that's, we're just gonna throw that in?
I mean, there's no, either it was a omission on their part, they agreed to do it at their cost, or it was something that, you know, the committee, yeah, and said, you know, "No, that shouldn't be in there, here's why." So, again, your best answer is probably for me to just forward the email to you, and you can read the answers individually.
We're not voting on that tomorrow.
Okay, so there's a lot of directions to remove those items, okay, and then we'll come back to this, 'cause I've got a lot more questions when it comes to this document.
And I'm happy to put this part of it on the deck, but if you want to forward your comments over, I can answer them individually in detail, put in the packet the next meeting, and then, you know, that'll give you the benefit too of seeing what IDOT said verbatim.
Okay. Okay, but if we're just voting on removing those things that are in there to remove, I 100% think we're sure, I'm not so sure, we've got our costs nailed down yet, and so I say we remove them. Thanks.
Are we just looking for comments right now?
Yeah.
We're not voting on tonight's debate consensus.
I know, absolutely. I'm not worried. We're starting, we're moving, so.
Did you say that the downtown businesses called you and want these things left in?
Yes. Two, one, one.
Two, one.
That's one thing, I agree with making cuts for cuts, 'cause we may, I think that's something we need to definitely look at still. The one thing that I'd like to keep as kind of a general consideration, as we're talking about these, do we cut them or do we keep them, is the stamped concrete and the crosswalks. Of all the things, this one does have the actual benefit that I can see, that's not aside from the aesthetic and aside from the benefits to the businesses down there. This one does help to separate the look in the texture of the pavement, as we're talking about crosswalks, we've had discussions about, you know, safety issues. Something I'd like for us to actually consider, if we can make cuts, not that we can afford to manage to keep this one in, this is one that I do feel strongly about, that if we can manage it, to consider it at least.
What's it gonna cost for us to cut these things? Like when we took the bike rails out, we still owe $30,000. So if we take these and switch them out, what's it gonna cost the city?
To remove them? No. So, they did confirm that the removal of color, stamping, fencing, and handrails could be done within health staff, no over-avoid of the project, with fair modeling work on our end there, and, of course, and no cost to us.
So there's four items on here. I'm assuming everyone's okay with removing the fox fencing and the fox handrails, right? You wanna go around the room, I mean, stamped sidewalk and the coloring? All right, everyone, pretty much, wanna get the good back to. Jackie, stamped concrete?
I have a question on the stamped concrete removal, is that gonna be hard to maintain?
There's a state, there's a state law there, we maintain, we don't destroy.
So the stamped concrete we're removing is the crosswalk?
Yes.
Not the walkway? That's gonna be a normal sidewalk in front of businesses, isn't it?
There's some stamping on the curb, and then back of curb.
Two foot, two foot back of curb.
Yeah, there's a ribbon behind the curb.
Yeah, two foot back of curb, with stamped wall, well, what's it?
Sounds right. And that was to differentiate the closest point to the curb for, you know? Yeah.
So when it's stamped, I'm assuming they're putting a design into it?
They, uh, or, I'm not sure.
Is that gonna be hard for staff to maintain, with ice?
It'd be like removing a pair of locks, a pair of driveways. So it's a little more, but not, I think, extraordinary. Yeah, maybe.
I think it's something that could, you know, if we can insert.
How much is that in particular, I'm sorry?
Just your main.
It's a penalty for stamping, and a penalty for coloring. 'Cause we're talking about two, just removing the stamping and removing the coloring, right? So our crosswalks are red, and you have, part of this too is the ADA curb limits, you know? So if we remove both these, you're not gonna have ADA curb limits that are colored, the texture.
But we would still have the rights.
We'd still have that, it would just be.
The ADA will be, and that's a state requirement, that can't be removed. That color can't be taken out, in my opinion, since it is a state statute on the ADA. Now, can I get clarification? This, the coloring stamping we're referring to, is that explicitly the crosswalks, or does it also include the curb and the two-foot band adjacent to the roadways? Or is it something that's? The total $19,000 coloring is crosswalks, sidewalks, and curb limits, it's all three of them. The $59,000 is only for stamps, well, I only put stamped sidewalk back of curb, but I believe it's for crosswalks as well. I don't know what the differentiation is between the two, if it's 50/50, or?
So, you can leave it, you can let your vote.
I'd like to leave it in, at least the color for the crosswalks, and obviously, the ADA, the ADA is state statute. Anything else, I don't have a problem removing.
Well, I think that for the sidewalks and the crosswalks, if we're gonna pay the $19,000 for the coloring, I don't have a problem with that. I think if they're taking away the railings and some of the nicer things for the business owners, to make that two-tone distinction, to make it pop, for $19,000, I'm okay with that. I would still prefer the stamping, the handrails, and the guardrail to our goal.
I would like to have it all taken out, because at last public safety meeting, we're trying to get signage down there that they have, I don't know if you're familiar with the one in Las Vegas, that has the flashing light and for pedestrian crossing, because if we don't, many people don't realize that it's a state law, then you have to stop for the pedestrians, then, since we don't have any much, any money in our budget, I would rather cut as much as we could, and possibly allocate in that site, that money, to our signage that we need.
Brad?
I'm good with all this. I'd be glad to see the colored sidewalks or crosswalks staying there, I think, for the money, I think that's a nice touch for the, for the downtown area, but otherwise, I'm good with this. I'd like to see it all removed.
Keep the coloring in. I would like to see it all stay in, but I know that that is not possible. But you can, I think the coloring, at least to make it, you know, I think that could stay in.
Okay, so it sounds like give it everything except the color. It's on about that?
Coloring through.
Coloring. Have we specified the color just for the crosswalks, or?
Just number two, the $19,000.
All.
Tiebreaker?
Yeah. Okay, you guys, direction, fencing out, handrail out, stamping out, coloring in.
Right.
Okay. That is what I will put in the letter to IDOT tomorrow. Okay. Next is Harton Circle, I want some motion to pursue the previously appeared call on developers bound B line, April 2004, goes 010285.
Just a little background.
I don't need a, motion in a second.
Seven.
Personal laws. Kristi, would you like to give us some background?
Yes. Wait till. Um, in May, the city council had authorized city staff to call a warranty bond with the developer, and about $4,000 for some outstanding punch list item from the Harton Circle subdivision. At that time, there were four trees specifically that were deemed to be dead, that need to be replaced. Since that time, staff has gone over the punch list as well as the annexation agreement, and there are clauses in there that say that the city has to respond within 30 calendar days of the request for improvements to be completed and accepted to the city. That was not met, therefore, we are asking approval from the city council to rescind that letter of warranty bond call for Harton Circle, and to execute and send out the attached letter to the bond issuer, letting them know that we're rescinding that request.
Comments, questions? Greg? I just have one, Kristi, you might be able to answer this for me. In the letter dated, and it's, I don't know if it says July 13th, it says July 13th, but, July 13th, it says that, Kristi, well, did you already submit this letter, or is this letter preformed and in the packet? You didn't already submit this, Greg?
No.
So we're not on the hook for this?
No.
Okay.
No, it has not been submitted. It's just so you can see the language that we use by.
Okay, and then I got a couple more. On, on May 6th of 2010, I see a letter from Joe in response to the request to the developer. Was there any response back to that letter?
I was not involved in that, but the developer is here. Do you, do you wanna answer that? Did you respond to the mail?
Okay, but you, I mean, there was no official response to the May 6th, 2010 letter, was there? Okay. So, and just one other point, this is probably because it's getting a lot of old information thrown in new information, that in one of the letters I read, it talked about including the crosswalks at intersections, removing and replacing all trees, and there were 14 listed in the letter dated May 6th, 2010, and debris removal from vacant lots. All that was done, correct? Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Closema?
Aye.
Moncazer?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Okay, next to the public works, new report? Just been a little bit paralyzed for two or three. I mean, I got the motion, but just, I like, so, okay. A motion to approve a letter of understanding between IDOT and United States Department regarding the proposed. Okay, next to, public works, new report? Just been removing the railings for two or three. And I got the motion, but just kind of, I like, we don't know. So, okay. A motion to approve a letter of understanding between IDOT and United City York regarding the proposed route seven million project will authorize the mayor to execute.
Summer.
Comments, questions? Go ahead, Jake.
The number one sidewalk, it talks about Wall Street and to Walgreens. Well, I had requests from many residents and sunflower states to have, you know, sidewalks. And I guess the question that I have is have we budgeted for this and can we afford to pay for these sidewalks? And run more, we need to come up with that funding in total.
We have not budgeted for it yet. We expect this project to be built sometime in the next five to ten years. They haven't budgeted for phase two engineering or phase three, which is construction yet. So hopefully our pass is through IDOT. Isn't any indication of how long it's gonna take to build the project? But it is five to ten years out from having to be budgeted and for us even thinking about it.
Okay. And the next question is under number two, shared use paths. The Seabird Fund, twenty percent of the payment construction, the total length of proposed trail is about twelve thousand feet. The Yorke section of the trails is a part of a larger system that would connect to the Aris Forest Reserve, to Young Forest Reserve, and close to the north. Kenner County has committed to funding the trail in unincorporated areas. Las Vegas committed to funding their section of the trail provided that both Yorke and Kenner County fund their sections. Proposed trail would be like two minutes, but would add eight feet wide instead of ten feet to reduce costs, et cetera, et cetera. Have we budgeted for these trails?
No, it's the same answer with the sidewalks. Because it's that far off, we have a three-year budget right now, we're looking to do a five-year budget. So it's not something we put all night until that fiscal year came up.
Okay, have we, have we got a commitment from the county and other entities regarding their, their payments or their parts of those sections?
Um, no, just their letter of understandings.
Okay. Same thing with the writing, I'm assuming this is all the same cost, we haven't budgeted because it's five to ten years out, right?
Correct.
It's the same answer for all of that, engineering all across the board, right? And I guess, um, the page, really is a page, it's the Illinois Department of Transportation memo, page two. Where it says, should the city decide in the future to eliminate the work listed above, they'll be, they may be responsible for the actual cost of perimeter engineering up to fourteen floors. So we're looking at ourselves possibly in the same situation we're in now, where we get, we make a, we make or wanna make a change, whether we have the fourteen thousand dollars?
Uh, correct. They put that in there. My understanding was that as long as we remove the trails prior to beginning of phase two engineering, which is design engineering, it shouldn't be much of a problem. You know, when you're looking at having a couple of years to take trails out of the project, you know, there's not much of an issue with working that into a workflow. It's just when they're two months away from running and we ask them to remove trails, then it becomes a problem.
So you have that confirmed by IDOT, they're moving only verbally, okay?
They've put it in writing just the opposite, so I think we can guess which way that would go if we ever tried to do it, but I think the argument is reasonable for us to make and if they would agree with it.
I'm gonna say this because it's an exaggeration, but it's, I'm trying to get the point across, you know? The Yorke portion of this project is intended to be scheduled for construction in the fiscal year twenty-twelve to twenty-seventeen, right? Five years. Has IDOT going to guarantee Yorke that they're gonna have the funding available for this project in, you know, in twenty-seventeen, twenty-twelve to twenty-seventeen? If they don't, can we charge them back for changes or issues or lack of funding? I already said I'm exaggerating over here, but you know, it's funny that IDOT wants to come to Yorke and charge us for all these changes because they wanted plans ahead of time. But you know, they want us to project out to twenty-seventeen, and if they drag them up with the funding, it's okay. You know, I just, I just find it hypocritical and, I don't know. Sorry, I'm counting.
It's your committee, but it won't matter.
It's amazing. It's just amazing.
Anyone else?
Thank you. And the page two, IDOT's letter to us. It says other items such as utility, relocations, or surrogations would also be a hundred percent of the local, local agency cost. Well, I have a concern with projecting out that far. Because is this stuff gonna cost us triple the amount that it would cost today? And if we're gonna budget and plan that far in advance, I think we're gonna put ourselves in the position that we're in with other things right now. We don't know how the economy is, how it's gonna be then. And there's just so many, I think we're putting ourselves out on the whim. And I don't want us to be strong-willed again.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about budget to twenty-seventeen, that's like giving a, maybe one of us a crystal ball and saying, take, take, take a shot at it. Let's hope you have the funding, because if not, we're gonna nail you, you know, because you don't. It's, it's moving, Krista, budget that far out.
And we are, we're putting us in the same position, and we should have learned by experience that we don't know what the economy is going to be. And that's what we voted on years ago with different developments and bike paths and bike trails and different plans that were presented to us. We could have afforded it at that time, but we can't now.
But let's do the same mistake twice.
Right. Right. We've got the variance.
I mean, Alderman Spears kinda took the win out of myself, but hey, you're absolutely right. I was here two weeks ago, raining, complaining that we're stuck with this and this is what we have to do, and I wasn't too happy about it, but I said, let's move forward because the city committed. We're still the same city, it might be different Alderman, it might be different mayors, but we're still the same at Yorke, so we're stuck with what we did ten years ago. I don't want some Alderman ten years from now sitting in the seat saying, Alderman Colesy will stop me with this longer list of things that we must now do because they, they passed this. But I agree, they're asking us to say, yes, we will have the money for this longer list of items. And I'm not saying I'm against these things, I'm saying I think it would be a great idea if we can budget for them and if we can afford them. I can't sit here and say, yes, I promise you in twenty-seventeen, the city can fund these projects. I just can't. That doesn't mean I'm against them, I just can't budget for them. So if we are working on a five-year budget, or maybe that's something that we might be interested in doing, looking at a bigger picture, considering these, these new widening programs are coming up, we know there's four or five of them coming down the pike. So maybe the first step is let's work on a bigger budget plan. Let's look at the big picture budget-wise to see what our projections are and where we wanna allocate these resources in the future. And if this is a priority for us that we allocate the resources, fine, let's send this letter out saying, yes, we as a council agree that we will commit these resources in the future based on our projections. But right now, we have nothing. We have nothing to go on. So I can't say, yes, I'm gonna agree to send this out to IDOT. And Gary to add to that, you know, even that, Carl, even if we do a five-year, you know, a budget out to twenty-seventeen, you know, projections are projections and, you know, those revenues may not come in, the expenses may be high, and we'll, we'll be an ass to send a letter of understanding saying, we're gonna have it there. And I just think, I just think we can't change this stuff like that, and we're gonna get ourselves some trouble. I just try to, just try to judge them. I agree that projections are just projections. The problem though is that when you're talking about widening state roads, it is a five-to-ten year project. So you're always gonna be in that predicament of, well, I can't see five or ten years ahead. Right now, we would be sticking our necks out with no information. If we sat down and looked at the budget and wrote down projections, we would still not be one hundred percent sure, but we have a better picture and a better idea. Because to get a project that's five or ten years down the road, you're gonna have to stick your neck out a little bit, otherwise these roads will never get widened. So I'm not, we need to look at the numbers, and I agree, projections are just that, and I would obviously be leaning to be much more conservative in my numbers. And even with the conservative numbers, if it works out, then fine. But I'm not gonna come up with all these creative accounting numbers to make me feel a little fuzzy inside to vote for this in the future, so. The door is open, but we have to be very conservative in the way we look at it. You know, we'll see what funding's left, what funding's left that IDOT has available then, so.
Like I said, I think, this is something I think needs to happen ultimately, but one of the biggest problems I see right now is whether they're saying, well, we may be responsible for a change cost.
A letter of understanding is good, but that's, that's our one kicker, is they're being caught with fees that we can't commit to.
If that can be removed, the letter of agreement would be acceptable. But we can't commit to something that we don't know we can do without, in our, if they make changes, they're not on the hook to, you know, pay anybody for that. If we make changes, just because we financially can't afford it, what are we gonna do? We have to pay to change it. Doesn't make a lot of sense, it's not fair on our part, so I think that's the biggest problem I have, is that we can't do something we can't necessarily.
A motion to second on table. Other question? No problem.
Teylin?
Aye.
Gilson?
May.
Pat?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Crossman?
Aye.
Van Patten?
Aye.
Will Shukey?
Aye.
Motion first.
I'm gonna stitch it with, I have. Staying in and leaving, right? Okay.
In my public works, Jake? Public motion number two, I don't see anything on that for the motion, so we're just talking about progressive energy, natural gas proposal? Is there, am I missing something? There is a motion, there is a motion.
It's the second number one.
A bit of incident. I'm doing a glass there. Okay, a motion to do the firing natural gas accounts from Nycor to Santana for a contract term of twelve months. Do you want me to go through those too?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Comments, questions?
I have a question, Mark. Can I ask you, Mark, basically, you're saying you're saving money, you said, no?
Really? And now it is.
As a matter of fact, I saw that, how much they got, thirty-six hundred, we were gonna save us, but what are they gonna make us pay?
Uh, they get paid directly to the supplier. So, you know, when they switch, or when we switch natural gas vendors, the broker gets kind of that cost.
When something goes wrong, who fixes the stuff? Nycor or some gas company that there?
Uh, well, these are the pipes and the right-of-way delivery systems stolen by Nycor, the actual production of the gas is, who is what's changing?
George? Have we checked into, obviously, we've looked into what the ten selected accounts switching them to Santana will do for us for cost? Have we talked to Nycor to see what, what taking away those ten accounts from them might do in terms of less volume, in terms of low cost to us for changing our agreement with them?
No, we haven't. I don't believe our, our rates are based on that. We get a portion of whatever we pay each year back as part of our franchise agreement, which has to do with, it's cash for terms is the program, but I'm not sure that it's volume-based, I think it's just a flat rate.
Can I suggest we verify that? Because if we take ten accounts away from them, and, you know, I know a lot of things are volume-based, and if we take ten accounts away from them, we may find the rates change. So just, just for, you know, dot your i's, crush your t's sake, maybe we should ask that question at Nycor.
Well, not only, not only that, George brought up, it also is based on annually, we get a rebate back based on our usage, but our usage is gonna drop.
Rebate is based on population.
It's only based on population, not on usage at all.
Correct.
Anyone else? Local?
Well, I would move to table this issue, so we get an answer based on Alderman Gilson's comment as to will that have an effect on the rates if we reduce our consumption, basically. So I would move to table this until, back to public works.
Second? Local?
Crossman?
Aye.
Van Patten?
Aye.
Will Shukey?
Aye.
Teylin? Gilson?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Okay, no item development community report, no public safety community report, no animal community report. Hot for one item on there, and I will entertain a motion to approve change of the rent-free vote for the playground with Matthew C. seven hundred and forty dollars. Comments, questions on this one? Local?
Van Patten?
Aye.
Will Shukey? Teylin? Gilson?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Crossman?
Aye.
Question, please.
Okay, um, development commission, um, development commission meeting is tomorrow. One item, I am the board member of Town Meeting as chairman of development commission, that is just an informational item. One board of appeals, one report, city health report, no report, no city clerk, any report, city president?
Just one item, we've verified today that IDOT is coming to perform a routine audit of the peace pension fund, and as a relative of the group fund, this is a first audit that we have right now, so I'll be looking forward to seeing the process, to see how long we're going to have to see this, and how we're gonna do.
Is this gonna run it?
Can you elaborate on the insurance?
Oh, okay. Okay. I thought you said IDOT, I said, really? Oh, okay, really? Well, you people are really get busy, aren't you?
Do you need any other reports?
No. Well, from my friends over at the library board, I just wanted to bring up an ordinance proposal that's gonna be in federal administration, the next administration meeting then before us, just to give you guys a heads up. There was an issue with the, the developer impact fees, how the library board was able to use those fees. They have currently about two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars after these fees, but the way the previous ordinance was written was very restrictive. They could use it basically on brick and mortar issues within the library, and many of the, not many, all of the board members let me know of the frustration as far as how restricted the use of the money was. There's only a limited amount of things we can do for those two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars that are currently in the funds, but to hopefully help that in the future when redevelopment takes off, Attorney Law has already drafted a new proposed ordinance that I showed the library board last night at their meeting. They were very happy that it would be an administration committee. It basically adds a couple more criteria as far as where we can spend that money. It doesn't raise the fees, it doesn't put it forward any additional tax or burden on the taxpayer. It's the same fee, but it allows the library board to move out of the brick and mortar and into the library, technology, computers, books, things that they cannot spend that money on right now. So that will be an admin and expected at the city council before you, so, thank you. I'm gonna do the YBSD meeting, and don't shoot the messenger here. So there's quite a few things that apply to the city, and there's quite a few comments directly linked with the city, so I'm gonna come out with it all. I attended the YBSD meeting, seven-eleven of lemon, called the order to make some of this shorter. There's a discussion liability insurance, they're looking at an annual premium of eighteen thousand dollars for liability insurance for the YBSD, and that covers eleven million dollars in total umbrella in general liability to insurance. Discussion.
I'm going to do the YBSD meeting, and don't shoot the messenger here. So there's quite a few things that apply to the city, and there's quite a few comments directly linked with the city, so I'm going to come out with it all. I attended the YBSD meeting, 7/11 of 11, called the order to make some of this shorter. There's a discussion liability insurance, they're looking at an annual premium of $18,000 for liability insurance for the YBSD, and that covers $11 million in total umbrella in general liability to insurance. Discussion, if pollution insurance is necessary, their fines were covered in policy. Jack Magnuson will check into that and get back to them, and then they're going to look at that the next meeting. Dallas looked at the contract and fines and penalties, and penalties were excluded, so, but Jack will still clarify, as in terms of punitive damages were also excluded. We don't want to wait till August 8th to approve that. June, June and July bills were approved as presented. Executive director gave a report, dissolved oxygen project has been delayed, waiting for parts, in process of arming in the west side plant gate entry. Operators, um, operators for those gates are $5,000 each, done by remote. Executive director report also interviewed operators for a position, we're still waiting for applicants. Met with driving equipment about plant equipment and ammonia load, getting proposals. Talked with Hutchinson Engineering about river road bridge construction. And this I think we need to listen to and take notes on. Concerned about a rise in the elevation of the road and the narrowing of the entrance to the plant and drainage. And they said that's going to affect them. So they also expressed concern about fast-tracking the bridge construction without a report on how they are going to handle the dam. Asked if the bridge construction might be jeopardized depending on the outcome of the dam stabilization or removal. So it's all stuff we should probably look into. Um, two, uh, maybe a couple tours for students this week. YBSD met with the city, Gary Bart and Lynn Dubachek. They discussed the ice cream facility at the Whitewater Park along with restaurant behind the facility, or possible restaurant behind the facility. Issue about cutting the deal with, they have an issue with cutting the deal, um, about cutting the deal with the private business in a public place versus cutting the deal with the private businesses across the street. The YBSD has no, no law to an incentive to cut a deal, and they leave it open, but that's their feedback. YBSD wants more communication between the city and the district. Joe Laiwout was their point man, Kevin questioned who he goes to for day-to-day issues. Had an issue with Route 47 widening and Whitewater businesses. YBSD didn't know, didn't know about the business before they had, and this is, they were talking about the Whitewater businesses, the construction there. Said they didn't know about the businesses before they had plumbing in the floor. They were supposed to go to them first for permit. So they suggest that we follow our protocol and go to them for a permit before we allow them to construct because they're having an issue with the waste traps. And this is a big lack of communication has caused that issue. YBSD would like for the city to wait for a permit from the YBSD as they are supposed to, this would solve the miscommunications. YBSD is not in favor of waiving fees for the Whitewater private business, so they said to stay consistent with their fees and not to say bad precedent. Lynn Dubachek doesn't like the way they structure their fees. YBSD feels their fees are justified. Dallas mentioned that the city is sacrificing their resumption status regarding paying the real estate taxes on that facility. Wanted to know if the city has considered that.
Yes, it's in the agreement.
Okay. YBSD stated that they are not in favor of waiving more fees, oh, again. And Dallas stated if the city is going to get into the business of renting property, then they better start considering payment of the fees and real estate taxes ahead of time. YBSD mentioned that the, that there was 50%, there's 50% more water being treated by the YBSD than the city pumps annually. This is a lot of inflow and infiltration, so we're going to look into that further. Talked about issues with grease trap compliance standards of the YBSD. Office manager Susan Mikey gave a report, reported that the budget has been passed, but report needs to be signed when they're going to post the budget. Susan also commented on new hire policy and the specifics of that. Philippe Merle from all the Georgetown data is reporting, maybe meeting with, um, with, oh, oh, there'll be, there'll be a meeting with the Fox River Study Group, they said the river's very low, discussion on flow flow trigger monitoring, including that discussion. Discuss flow pass, pass, discuss flow pass and current conditions, the capacity, flow conditions are creeping up. They said they'll be out of capacity around 2014. And then they had discussion of secondary bank selection. So, I appreciate it.
I just wanted to point out, I guess we'll kick it over to the next city council meeting because it didn't officially, I guess, make the agenda. It's in our packet, but there was a public safety one, which was overlooked on the agenda. I don't want to be accused of violating the open meetings act because it wasn't officially on the agenda. So we're just asked to put PS1, parking the Grand Reserve North, unfortunate item included in the packet that I asked to be on this agenda to the next city council meeting.
The reason it was left in the packet, it was on the draft agenda, and we didn't send out the notification letters to the residents on time, and so we pushed it off to the next meeting, but the packet materials didn't get removed from the packet.
So when is the letter going out?
Uh, it went out, um, yesterday.
Okay.
Okay. We have a question from the phone. Are they correct in the fact that they moved forward with construction and planning it there without a permit, from my understanding?
No.
It's not correct? Okay.
We should discuss that you're missing them.
Anyone else? Any state reports? No. Additional papers?
Uh, can't walk, the tree fall down, it's called several buildings in Calhoun Ridge that you don't have a sign about the city. But it's not us, it's Convent that's running down to Convent in line that's tree, tree thing not even Convent line. What makes sense, they make this open, the entrance at 47 because of that, the buses are sand, there's like trucks are like steep through there, some divisions are mad, you got to go out.
Absolutely. We're, we're going to be there tomorrow, we had a call for TD, it's like we thought the road was going to be back over today. So absolutely.
What was it, city called, somebody, not you, but it said, somebody, city told, we don't have, all, all the police vans are down now. We don't have any. I said, that makes sense. God, son.
Well, you're so, you know, emergencies happen, I mean, I'm sure you have a plan to build this all, all the way to nowhere.
Yeah, maybe a two, we are, there's your last year, there's some us, and, uh, controlling our, keeping an eye out for that, and also visiting university tour. I mean, his main comment was just, you know, complaining, he's a lot of extra, you know, kind of going, track, faster track, they're trying to get through and, you know, get out. So it was, uh, if they know on 47, it can't last long, except if you don't work there or something, they can throw it on 47. Thanks.
Any other additional business?
Yeah, I, some of the speakers brought this up tonight today, and it's an area that I'm, uh, I will keep ignorant on. So I was asked, I was curious if we were able to get a breakdown of our permits for you building new houses in Yorkville, how much the fee is, and how that gets distributed. And is it possible to get a comparison for municipalities within, within Kendall County?